We're starting.
Oh, there he is.
All right, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting May 6, 2025. We're asking the clerk to call the roll for tonight's regular meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Falcone?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilwoman Black to excuse Councilmember Falcone. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 In oaths, motion carries seven zero.
Hello.
All right, city clerk, will you please call the roll?
For the record, I'd just like to say six zero for the vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Try to remember that for the rest of the night.
All right, Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Pascal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
And Mayor Curtis.
Here. Our study session tonight is on two items. First, we'll have an update on the city's legal actions related to the King County's Northeast Recycling and Transfer Station. Second, we will receive an update on the Wanita Bay Wildflower Meadow Pilot Project. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. City manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So, a lot has happened since the county announced that they were citing the NERTS transfer facility in Kirkland with option 1B. And so a lot of staff analysis and legal analysis has gone on and want a chance to tell the council and the public what has been happening since then. So today is a chance to just provide all that information. Here to give that presentation, we have our... What do we got going on here? Ah, hold on, we're... Technical difficulties. We shall pause. All right, there we go. Thank you. So our Public Works Director, Truck Dever, is here. Our Utility Policy and Community Relations Supervisor, Carly Jorga. And our Solid Waste Program Lead, Jenna McInnis, is going to be leading this presentation, supported by our city attorney, Darcy Allers, as well. Is it coming out of both?
Yes.
Test, test. Six oh, six oh, six oh.
There we go. Now we got it.
There we go.
We good?
Okay.
We're just going to go straight to the presentation, not repeat all that, since it was just repeated, so.
All right, welcome, guys.
All right, are we in double or... Okay, we're single talking now. Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm Jenna McInnis, the Solid Waste Program Lead here for the city of Kirkland, supported with the Solid Waste Team, Carly and Gina online, Public Works Director, and our city attorney. Lots of folks working on this project. So, you know, as mentioned, I'm here to give an update on King County's NERTS project and the city's legal appeal. So, a little background for the audience. King County is planning a new transfer station to replace the existing Houghton Transfer Station in Kirkland. This has been a long process, multi-year citing process, public engagement, you know, a number of things that has culminated in this environmental impact statement and the citing decision that we're at today. So, the draft EIS was published in 2024. Kirkland staff did a lot of analysis of that and provided a substantial comment letter to the draft EIS in April 2024. So, more recently, King County published that final environmental impact statement evaluating the potential options for where to cite this location. So, the options evaluated, two in Kirkland and one in Woodinville. The first option, alternative 1A, is at the Houghton site. This is a facility that would be constructed after the existing facility is closed in a somewhat similar footprint, as you can see on the map. Alternative 1B is also at the Houghton site, but would be a facility that is built adjacent to the existing transfer station. So, this would allow King County to have the existing facility open during construction of a new facility. This does expand further into the site than the existing facility does. Alternative 2 is the Woodinville location. This is some commercial property in Woodinville on the Woodinville Redmond Road. So, most recently, this is a little timeline of kind of where we're at. So, on March 10, King County released their final EIS evaluating these options. And then, on March 21, they announced their selection of alternative 1B as their preferred site for this new station. There was not a ton of information given to us about that citing decision, but they released that. And so, following the release of that, Kirkland filed a notice of appeal on the final EIS on March 27. In addition, more recently, Kirkland filed a complaint in Superior Court on April 21.
Now, it's my turn. Hello. I'm just going to briefly go through the different sort of legal challenges that we've brought, because it's more than one. The first one that was filed was with the, with King County. It's an administrative appeal. And we've engaged outside counsel to help with both the administrative appeal and the Superior Court action we're going to briefly talk about, to support us in this specialized area. The administrative appeal process could take like a minimum of 90 days, is the estimate, but unless stayed by the parties, we've already engaged in some sort of the hearing examiner already delayed responding to scheduling a pre-hearing conference. You can see on the order of events as we talk through these, the notice of appeal was filed, we filed the statement of appeal. We just heard from the hearing examiner about conference scheduling, that they would reach out later to tell us, but we expect that it'll be in late June, based on the availability of King County. Just a note on that, King County also had another appeal filed by Phil Allen and Friends of Taylor Fields. That one focused a little differently than the pieces we're going to talk about. Some overlap, but theirs focused on sort of the process, legal requirements, much more on the toxins at the landfill, and, and some sort of historical information. We expect that it's likely that the hearing examiner will consolidate these two appeals, because they wouldn't want inconsistent results on the two of them. That hasn't happened yet, but we expect that it will. This, this administrative appeal will be heard by King County's hearing examiner. And then, if a party didn't like the decision of the hearing examiner, it could be appealed to King County Superior Court. We've got a lot of data. Jenna could probably talk more about the website, but we have a lot of information for the community posted on our website with the link there on the screen, and also was in our memo materials, if people are looking for that. The next thing that we did was that, so we'll sort of talk through the, the pieces of the challenge, but the administrative appeal is mostly focused on the EIS itself, the environmental analysis. And then, we filed this Superior Court challenge directly about the citing decision, selecting 1B over one of the other alternatives. And the basis for that was that we wanted to sort of make a placeholder. The citing decision itself isn't a LUPA decision, isn't something that can be appealed as a land use decision. So, there's not a lot of other avenues for challenging the citing decision, rather than the EIS CIPA decision. That was, is really the basis for the hearing examiner challenge. And so, we filed that on March 21, as Jenna noted earlier, I mean, excuse me, April 21, recently. A show cause hearing will be noted the week of May 26. That likely will not occur, because we're working with the county on staying those proceedings pending the administrative appeal. But just a note to everybody that we do have sort of separate legal processes proceeding here. This one specifically challenges the citing decision as arbitrary, capricious, and illegal due to the way they made the decision under code and state law. And then backing back to the inadequate EIS, so that's where there's a lot of overlap there.
Darcy, I see a question.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
So, if the impartial King County employee who is the King County Hearing Officer while we're taking action against King County does not rule in our favor, we can go to the Snohomish County Superior Court?
That decision for the hearing examiner is appealed to the King County Superior Court on the administrative appeal side. But we're in Snohomish County Superior Court for this particular action, challenging the citing decision.
Okay.
But that, the administrative appeals focused on the, the primary focus is on the EIS itself, which is sort of a narrow subset of the challenge to the citing decision.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then, just to sort of walk through, and then Jenna's going to jump back into more of the substance of the basis for the administrative appeal. The, the basis for this administrative appeal that sort of flows into the Superior Court challenge is about the, focused on the inadequate analysis of transportation impacts in the EIS. Inadequate analysis of hazardous waste risks and mitigation resulting from, as Jenna talked about, 1B digging much more into the existing landfill site than the current location. And, and then some, and then procedural errors based on how the FEIS was, the final EIS was issued. We sort of go into those each in a little more detail through the next slides Jenna's going to walk you through.
Awesome. Thanks, Darcy. So, again, I'll go into a little more detail on kind of these main categories of concern, but just want to point out, there is even more detail in the memo and then on that webpage, if folks have more questions on kind of the nitty gritty of it. So, one of those big topics, transportation. So, couple key components of our transportation concerns. Several important comments that we made during the draft EIS period were just not addressed in the final EIS. So, we felt that these were substantive comments that needed to be addressed in the final EIS that we could not find kind of, you know, appropriate information on. In addition, there was inadequate information about the transportation impacts of operating a station while constructing a station. So, many times through the final EIS, the analysis for 1A and 1B was kind of deemed as similar. And we felt that, you know, operating while constructing, there would be more substantial differences that weren't really called out. In addition, there was some significant intersections that were not appropriately addressed in the EIS that we think should have been to appropriately identify the kind of impacts and mitigation that would be required for those intersections. Another big category mentioned, you know, is really about excavation and using more of the closed landfill site. So, the EIS, you know, does recognize that there are more significant impacts of using alternative 1B and going further into the site. You know, we feel that there's additional risks to folks nearby, to workers, and this could mean, you know, a lot more dollars spent on mitigating that. So, while it is possible, you know, it leads to a more significant amount of the budget being used there, potential construction delays, you know, some real concerns there. And again, you know, just the full details of what we would expect for mitigation to be provided just was not.
There, we have a...
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. So, Darcy, if we win this litigation, if, what do we win? I mean, what realistically, because, right, they're not all going to just take this whole show somewhere else, probably, right?
I mean, the administrative appeal, if we were successful in challenging the, the way that EIS, the hearing examiner would order them to go back and redo that analysis. So, this isn't stop their decision there, it doesn't change that, that this continues to happen, but it requires the better evaluation of the environmental impacts, more consistent with the city believes should have been evaluated.
Thank you.
And then, the third kind of main category of concerns we had is about the process. So, I've mentioned that, you know, these significant comments that we made during the draft EIS period, a number of them were not fully addressed, were not easy to find in the final EIS. In addition, King County addressed a number of these through a addendum, which did not really allow additional time for review. It kept the same schedule and just did not let us, you know, appropriately find this information in the EIS, but then it wasn't there. And then addition, you know, no decision document on the citing choice. I think Darcy has mentioned this, but we didn't feel like there was enough information about the reasoning and the appropriate mitigation measures for that citing decision. So, you know, next steps, as Darcy has mentioned, this is kind of a multi-step legal process. So, we are engaged with that legal counsel challenging the EIS and the citing decision, you know, both. We will expect to continue to advocate that if this were to be located in Kirkland, that alternative 1A is the less impactful option, and that it would need to receive full and thorough mitigation. We're going to keep updating that webpage, kirklandwa.gov/NERTS. So, the public, council, you know, any questions and stuff that come in, we're trying to provide the details there.
And this last slide, it wasn't some information that wasn't in the memo, but we thought it would be helpful to share with you about once they, once King County, whichever alternative is selected, if they submit a permit in Kirkland to build the, a transfer station there, it would be a process 2B application. I'm not sure if any of this council has had a process 2B come before it, other than perhaps former Mayor Sweet, Councilmember Sweet. 2B has a hearing examiner hearing with a recommendation to council, and then council makes the decision. So, we thought to delight that for you, in case there were questions later about this. During, as part of that process, and Adam's here to elaborate more if there are questions, but the city can request any information from the county that it has in order to ascertain compliance with code requirements. So, that 2B application process, we've got a quote down here, part of that analysis is about, you know, skipping to the bottom, but evaluating the public health, safety, and welfare, and how that's met by the permit and by the process. It is considered an essential public facility, so it's not something where the regulations should be so restrictive that it couldn't be cited in Kirkland, but it does give us some space to ensure that the public health, safety, and welfare is met by whatever is constructed there. You can see there are some of the other permit review and ultimate approval or denial would entail some other things, including significant public notice and additional environmental review on top of what they've already done now, that's more project specific, rather than the more general sort of high, high level evaluations that they've done. One thing to note about that is that once permits are submitted, if there are, then we would notify council right away, because it's that point is when that you can, can no longer speak ex parte about, about the project to anyone. So, we'll give you some more information at that time, too, but that's the sort of trigger is, not right now, you can talk to people about the project, about NERTS, nothing restrictive just because of this process, but once the permit's submitted, you'll have to, we'll have to sort of funnel communications into the formal hearing process.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that is the end of our presentation about kind of our appeal status, so I'll just pause and open up for any additional questions.
Council? City manager?
Thank you. I just had one other element. So, while this has been happening, I did talk to John Taylor, who's the Director of King County Department of Natural Resources and Parks, which is the department oversees the Solid Waste Division. So, they're aware of our appeal, they do want to work with us. I think they're waiting for the action to happen today before they could really know the future of, you know, the executive office over the next nine months. And, but I think now that that has happened, we're going to reach out again and see if there's a way we can get together and maybe work through, through some of these as through mediation or alternatives to all of the, the legal issues, so. And he's expressed a willingness to do that, so more to come, and I'll keep the council updated on that.
Okay, I have a question, if no one else does yet. It sounds like there's a legal process that we can question the EIS, we can question opening up the landfill, we can question the citing. Is there not a legal, we have been really clear about our expectations for mitigation. Is there not a legal lane for us to make sure that the mitigation happens in addition to everything else?
I think a lot of that can come in local permitting. I don't know that everything that, that we've been, you know, talking about, we'd have to look at them all, but I think a lot of that can come as part of local permitting, and that's part of our conversations that we'll have with the county.
And that's what I was going to then go to city manager, and that's what we really need to talk to him about, is our expectations on mitigation. Councilmember Sweet?
Just to pile on to that, I think, I mean, one of the ways that I approach this is, I think, in terms of mitigation also being that state-of-the-art facility that we are absolutely requiring. So, it wouldn't necessarily be them, you know, developing our land or doing anything there. It would be in assuring that we get exactly the package that we want.
Yep. I immediately agree. Councilwoman Black?
And just a, and just to pile on to that. We've talked about mitigation, we've talked about a state-of-the-art facility. When I say we've talked about it, I mean, we've been really clear with the county. In addition, there's this kind of third category that's kind of on the penumbra, which is the community benefits that we expect at the site, and we've been really clear about that, too. Now, Darcy, I'm guessing as far as a legal challenge, requiring those community benefits that we've been very clear about all, all the way through the process, is not going to be part of the legal challenge, but could perhaps be part of a conversation that we're having with the county.
Absolutely.
Okay. I would certainly want that to be the case, and as well as the mitigation, as well as a state-of-the-art facility. Thanks.
Councilmember Tim Chisen?
If this is the wrong time to ask this question, you can just tell me. But there was a third baseball field at Taylor Field that was abandoned, and I want to put that on your radar, I don't know why. And it was, up top, Taylor Field had two baseball fields, but then there was a path down to a lower baseball field. down to a lower baseball field, and it's on that map. You think I'm crazy?
No, we picked up dog poop there.
It's not there anymore. The whole baseball field is grown over. And, okay, counsel, sorry.
No, I don't want to interrupt, I was just gonna get in.
Anyway, that's a question, maybe for another day, but I, we, it is no longer there, so I'm just wondering.
Councilwoman Black?
Well, I can actually help a little bit, because I was with Kirkland American Little League for so long, and there's actually two fields. So, Councilmember Tim Chisen is absolutely right, there are fields down there, there's two of them, and they've been abandoned mainly because it falls entirely upon the parent volunteers to maintain those fields. And so, they have always been, I think there was one year that I can remember where parents made a stab at making those lower fields playable. After that one time, I don't remember, despite being part of those work crews every year, I don't remember us trying to make those fields playable. They just, they lost their playability early after they were built, and they've just never been maintained. So, the parent volunteers have concentrated on the two upper fields.
Okay. We're off topic. Thank you, guys. So, city manager, as we define what these conversations are with John Taylor and King County, let's have a conversation on, perhaps some council members would be appropriate in those conversations also.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
And Darcy? Speaking of fields, we are now moving on to Wanita Bay Wildflower Meadow Pilot Project update.
Okay, so while we're switching, just want to note, we're rebooting the screen over there to avoid the previous complication, so I have to look at the other two screens. So, yeah, so this is something that we scheduled to get an update for you on the Wanita Bay Wildflower Meadow Pilot Project. There's been some work done, and we have allocated some of our Waste Management green grant money to potentially reseed this and expand the wildflower program for pollinators and some other things, and wanted the council to get an opportunity to hear about it because once it's done, it'll be quite visual. We think it could be a huge attractant for visitors as well as pollinators. But also, you might get a lot of questions about it, so we thought we should give you a chance to get some background on how we got here and what we hope will happen next. So, with that, our interim park and planning and development manager, Jody Galvin, will be making the presentation.
And Jason doesn't have a name tag. Jason, welcome.
Oh, Jason.
Everybody knows Jason, that's right.
There we go. Jason, you want to put one to?
All right. Counsel and mayor, thank you so much for having us here today. I am...
Continue.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
The public can see it.
I am genuinely quite excited to be here today and to share the Wanita Bay Wildflower Meadow Project with you all. It's a really fun, happy project to share with everybody. I'm here with our Parks and Community Services Director, Lynn Zawstra, and then Parks Management Superintendent, Jason Phelan. All right, so I think it's really important to recognize that this project is not just enhancing a meadow in an open field, it's really about Kirkland's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, really at every level. And we know that that's something that the city is really passionate about and that we're really trying to make this place welcoming, inclusive for everyone. And I would argue that there is no better place to see diversity in Kirkland than in our parks. You go out there, especially on a sunny day, you are gonna see just incredible biological diversity, you're gonna see human diversity, you're gonna see every kind of recreation that a person could do in a park, and you're gonna see how it contributes to the economic diversity of our community. And I would argue that that diversity is really what makes us resilient and makes us stronger. And that is something that is shared on a global level. The United Nations had the decade committed to biodiversity between 2011 and 2020 because there is recognition that for global resilience, we really need this diversity. And now we're in the decade on ecosystem restoration, and that's really all about understanding the contribution of ecological restoration to not just biodiversity, but also human diversity and economic diversity as well. And there's no better representation of that than the Green Kirkland Partnership and our 20-year Forest and Natural Area Restoration Plan. And if you were to read that plan and then go through the documents that the United Nation produces about both biodiversity and ecosystem restoration, you'd see that they really align. And Wanita Bay Park is the perfect place to get out on the ground and actually see that commitment and those principles in action. So, we probably all know where Wanita Bay Park is, but just in case somebody doesn't, it's a little bit more northern in our community and right off of the water at Wanita Bay. And the way that we plan out our sites in the Green Kirkland Partnership is we take our park locations, and all of the areas that are considered natural area are broken up into restoration management units, which you can see on the screen are the little light pink outlines. And the unit that we're talking about today is Restoration Management Unit 28. It's right in the center of the western half of the park. Some people may not know, but the park goes quite a bit to the other side of 98 there, but we're really focused on the western side of it, and Unit 28 in the middle. This area used to be part of the historic golf course that was at the site. I never saw that, I moved to Kirkland post-golf course. And it also really functions as kind of this open lawn space that the community values that has beautiful views, and people can go out there and just kind of passively recreate in that open lawn area. It also has a history of indigenous use, and if you were to review the Kirkland's document on native land history, you would be able to learn a little bit more about how the native indigenous people use this site as a wintering site. So, when the Parks Department works on any of our lands, we try to consider the historic uses of the site as well as the current uses of the site, and we layer that to come up with a plan for how we're gonna maintain an area. So, here's just a quick aerial of the site that we're talking about. You'll note Fire Station 21 is just across the street there. And then here's a real high-level overview of the maintenance activities that have been happening there since 2020. So, you all remember 2019, 2020, our parks were getting a lot of use, the community was pretty limited in what kind of recreational activities were available, and getting out into parks was very popular, especially our natural parks. I think that they really experienced an increase in use. People were looking around, what can I do that's near me where I'm not gonna be surrounded by a whole bunch of people inside? And so, our natural parks really had a lot of people in them, which is wonderful, and that increased usage meant also we got increased feedback from the community about what they would like to see in these spaces. And one of our longtime community members, who's been very active in parks for decades, brought it to our attention that there is an opportunity here. We had been mowing this site every two weeks, the way we mow most of our other sites, and if you're a person that's going out to a natural park and what you really want to experience is peace and quiet and birds and butterflies, and then you got the 11-foot mower driving by, it kind of ruins the vibe. So, she was wondering, could we desist with mowing? And we brought that back to our Parks Management Team, and the staff were like, that sounds wonderful, I do not like mowing the sand traps in Wanita Bay Park, it's really tough on my body, it's really tough on the equipment, we have tons of work to do, this could be an efficiency. But we also had to think about other people's perspectives, right? Because, because one person likes to go there and just have it be as natural as possible, we have plenty of other people that want to go there, and they don't necessarily want to be in the tall grass. So, we came up with a plan for giving it a try, and we decided that it was really important for us to mow a perimeter around the entire site, especially against the homes of the neighbors to the south. We decided it was really important to have pathways that people could walk if they didn't want to go through the tall grass, because sometimes tall grass is not the best to walk through. You get all the little burrs and the little seeds all over you. So, the purple pathways, those are mulched pathways and a little bit wider, and then the blue pathways are mowed pathways, they're a little bit narrower. And then the kind of salmon-colored circles, those are the tables and benches, so we also mowed around all of them. We've been doing this since 2020. We also added wildflowers, two patches of wildflowers. Wildflower seeds quite expensive, which is one of the reasons we're here today, and so we weren't able to do like a wholesale conversion. We also didn't think it would be wise to do, to attempt a wholesale conversion when the seed is so expensive, and we don't really know exactly which plants are gonna do well in this area. There's a lot of microclimates within Wanita Bay, little patches of water areas, drier areas, places where the frost hovers, places that don't seem to get frost. So, it was important for us to kind of try out some different strategies. We also proactively notified all the neighbors that have property against the park to let them know what we're doing. We're not, we didn't forget to mow, it's intentional that we're not mowing, but also, and I think what was most important about that is we gave them my direct phone number so that if they had a question or concern, they could contact me directly and say, hey, this isn't working for me, can we make some adjustments, which we did do. So, here's what it looked like on the ground when we started this work. We tried a number of different site preparation methods using equipment that we already had. We tried aerating, we tried kind of scarifying the soil, we tried like actually scraping the turf off, we tried tilling, we were, and then we were seeding these different spaces and kind of seeing like, what are we getting the best results from? We tried leaving it bare, we tried covering it with this engineered wood straw material. We added logs to kind of protect some of the planted areas, we broadcast seeded with push mowers or push seeders. If you go up to the kind of top of the lawn area, you'll find these odd mounds. Those are piles of excess top, well, it wasn't even topsoil, excess soil that we have from some other construction projects that we mounded up and seeded. It was really rocky, sandy soil, which is pretty perfect for these native pollinator species, and it's reminiscent of the Mima mounds that are in the South Puget Sound Prairie down in Tacoma. If you ever get a chance, go and check those out, they're incredible. So, that created some additional kind of micro areas for us to try establishing these species on. And we put up some signage, very little, we tried to keep it as like natural conditions as possible, but a couple small friendly signs. The one that's hard to read says, oh, native plant restoration area, please don't step on the baby plants. And this is what it started coming out as, which we were pretty dang excited about. So, beautiful tall grasses, a variety of species, a lot of them are introduced and not the native species, we're still, that's kind of next step in this process. But also, big patches of riverbank lupin, camas, fiddle neck, yarrow, the oak trees coming in. This is probably, I think, the most pertinent photo to like really take a look at because you can see this rectangle that we established and how it's very dry grasses all around it, but the rectangle that we seeded has this mix of the native wildflowers and the native grasses that are staying wetter longer, staying greener longer, really beautiful. But that took a lot of more intensive site preparation for those annual species to grow. We had to get like completely clear ground for them to do well, they couldn't compete with the existing grasses. These are all the things that we were learning along the way. So, if you were to go out there today, this is exactly what it would look like. I took this picture a couple nights ago, and you might think to yourself, well, where's all the flowers? That just looks like normal grass lawn. Part of it's because it's May, early May, and the grass hasn't really gotten going yet. And the wildflowers, there's a lot of different species out there, they each bloom in their own little window, and so what you might see today, you might not see two weeks from now. Here's another vantage point, you can start seeing a little bit more of that patchy microclimate with some of the taller grasses in there. And then here's where a bank of the riverbank lupin got in, they're one of the species that will successfully reseed themselves at the site and are doing quite well. And it's been interesting to see where the patches have been migrating over the last couple of years. But if you were to really start poking around, you would start finding the gems. You'd be finding the big-leaf lupin and the lark spur and the checker mallow and the camas that's growing next to the big-leaf lupin in the tall grass that you wouldn't see if you didn't poke around and look for it. And again, that's because we've only been doing this in little patches, right? And what we're here today is talking about kind of going big with this. There's our camas and our fiddle neck and more of the lupin, and then if you get really close to the ground, you realize, oh, there's actually a lot of flowers out there, they're just very, very tiny. And so, some of the annual species are pretty small, and you have to know what you're looking for to appreciate them. And then, this was probably my favorite part of the other night. So, I'm wandering around and I'm looking at all the little flowers, and I'm appreciating all the biodiversity. And then I look up the hill and I spot this group of students doing their graduation photos next to the Mima mounds, and I was like, yes, the human diversity is appreciating the biological diversity. They're literally posing right in front of these random hills that we put in and covered with flowers, and we knew that was important. We've had conflict for years between the photographers and the people doing the restoration work. The photographers keep stepping on our flowers that we're planting, and photographers are like, well, I need to get in where the flowers are to get the good pictures. And so, one of the things we did with the mounds, but also with the logs, is we tried to create photo opportunities to draw the photographers to those areas, so hopefully then some of the restoration areas wouldn't get hit so hard. So, it was extremely exciting for me to see them literally posing in front of the mounds. And then as I was walking down back towards the causeway, I spot this person who's got this enormous camera, like, what is he taking a picture of? So, I get up closer and I spot the three deer that are sleeping in the tall grasses, right? We've got ladybugs out there, we've got our native bumblebees out there, we've got our native mining bees out there, that's the little guy with all the pollen on its legs, we've got our predators out there, our bobcat friends that live out there. And if you go a little further, this isn't the meadow, but I had to include it because I know you guys would like to see it, but we have a very, two very active beavers. So, if anybody's interested, just go down to Wanita Bay right now, pretty much every night you can see these beavers out there, and then that's a little muskrat swimming around. So, it was just the best evening walk out there. And it got me really excited about what we have planned next. So, we applied for the Green for Good grant funding from Waste Management, that is part of our contract with them, and I think you'll get a chance to learn more about that in June. And we applied for $34,500, which we're planning to spend over the next two years, and we're spending that entirely on seed and bulbs because it's quite expensive, but we're gonna spread it out over two years again because we want to keep testing our methods, but also because we don't want to have an experience where you get like a colossal failure because we seeded in November and get some sort of freak snow event, right? It's unlikely to happen, but I think it's wise to kind of hedge our bets and spread this out over a couple of years. These are the two vendors that we have ordered our seed from, Northwest Meadowscapes, which is out of Port Townsend, a little bit more coastal influence, and Silverfall Seed Company out of Oregon. This is a sidebar, we have started trying to get more of our seed source for all of our restoration work out of Oregon, and just to at least mix it up a little bit. These are all the species that are gonna be seeded this fall, so there's a ton of different native grasses and a mix of perennial and annuals in there. And the timeline for this work is right now, you can go out and visit, and if you poke around and find the little patches, you can enjoy different flowers out there every few weeks, and that'll last until August. We'll mow the entire meadow in late August, early September, and then we'll be tilling, we have a new tiller now, around the established patches of flowers. So, the places where we know we have camas and we know we have lupin, we're gonna till around those. But it, it is gonna end up looking like a farm project, we're gonna be out there with a tractor and a tiller, and we're gonna farm probably eight acres out there. And then we'll be broadcasting seed in those tilled areas and planting some bulbs, they need to go through the winter in order to germinate. They need to go through the winter in order to germinate in the spring. And then in the spring, we'll be overseeding with some select annuals to get those real pops of color. And that is the plan. We'll do that this year and we'll repeat that next year. Questions?
Tell that you're enjoying this project.
Oh, I love this project so much.
I do too.
Council questions? Councilor Sweet?
I'm just going to make a comment. When we bought our home a block away from the park, oh God, about 44 years ago, we mowed all the way to the shore edge. It would, you know, it was a huge manicured, not particularly well-used park. And slowly but surely, I think parks through, with the help of a certain interested neighbor have kind of built this restoration. And I can't tell you, it is so beautiful. I went down there actually just last week. And I love what you're doing with the mounds. I, I can't figure out where the moles are. But I know they're still there. So I'm just really excited about it. I, I can't tell you, it's, you know, it is a beautiful park, but this is going to really set people up. The one thing I worry about is in bat season, that park draws people from all across neighborhoods because the bats come down for all the bugs. And, you know, everybody's down there with their flashlights and, and laying on the tables. So it's good that you're mowing around. It's pretty interesting stuff. But thanks so much for this. It's a beautiful project.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Councilor Black.
Thank you, Madam President. I had to, I had to ask Jason if this reminds him of the farming he grew up with because I'll bet it doesn't much.
Besides the poller aspect, absolutely not.
I love this project for all the reasons you outlined, creating this ecosystem, and it's so well-loved. I hope that you're getting the emails that we're getting about and the things that people are posting on Facebook that they've seen. This is a real jewel in the city of Kirkland. I did warn the city manager that I could say, that's awesome. Where else can we do this? So I would be curious, as you are doing this and testing, if you sort of have a list in your mind of other opportunities for this. One of the things that I suggested was we could remove some of the grass around City Hall and do some things like this. Because it's beautiful. And as you said, it brings in the bees and the birds and the people. So I'm just hoping that you're thinking for other projects to do this.
Thank you. We do have some establishment already happening at North Rose Hill Woodlands. And we have been, it's near the playground there. And we have been every year like expanding that a little bit more and a little bit more. We've started doing some hillsides that are difficult to mow.
Excellent.
Right? Like finding these, these little opportunities.
Great. Keep it up.
Yeah.
And then I'm sure at some point it's going to end up being a wedding destination, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we wrapped up our study sessions fairly quickly. So unless there's an objection, I want to suggest that we go into our closed session to discuss collective bargaining rather than, than at the conclusion of our regular meeting. So anybody object to being efficient with our time? All right. We are going to go to closed session. We'll be back at 7:30 for our regular meeting. Thanks, everybody.
All right, we are back in session following an update on the King County's Northeast Recycling and Transfer Station and an update on the Wanita Bay Wildflower Meadow Pilot Project. We will start tonight's meetings with proclamations. Thank you everyone for coming this evening. Councilwoman Black is going to read our proclamation. City Manager.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So we'll be proclaiming May of 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Kirkland. In our In our council packet in the memo, there's a lot more information and background. There's also some wonderful links that provide more resources for folks who want to learn more and celebrate this month with us. Here to receive the proclamation is Grace Haywan Brown. She's a community builder and volunteer, a cultural arts commissioner, and also Kirkland Initiative Graduate Class of 2024, and she has with her friends and family to receive the proclamation.
Yeah, please, the whole family.
Welcome, everybody.
Oh, sorry. Grace, here's a copy of the proclamation. Tonight, I'm going to be reading a proclamation of the city of Kirkland proclaiming May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Kirkland. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander, or AAPI, Heritage Month is an annual observance to celebrate the contributions that generations of the AAPI community have made to American history, society, and culture. And whereas more than 17% of Kirkland's residents identify as AAPI, making their presence and influence a vital part of the city's social fabric, economic vitality, and community identity. And whereas the city encourages community members to learn and celebrate AAPI Heritage Month through resources such as the King County Library System's AAPI book collections, the Wing Luke Museum in Seattle's Chinatown International District, and the Internationalist AAPI Business Code. I'm going to pause and let another guest join us. Please come join us. Grace insists upon it. Welcome. Whereas this observance reflects Kirkland's continued commitment to equity, inclusion, belonging, and community safety, as outlined in Resolutions 5240 and Resolution 5434, while affirming the city's stance against anti-Asian hate and violence. And whereas the city of Kirkland reaffirms its dedication to fostering a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment where the cultural heritage of all communities is honored and celebrated. Now, therefore, Mayor Kelly Curtis, on behalf of the Kirkland City Council, proclaims May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Kirkland, Washington, and encourages the community to uplift Asian American and Pacific Islander voices and reaffirm our shared commitment to building a welcoming community for all. Thank you, Grace.
Thank you, councilmember. There is always room for one more, and that's the heart of Kirkland. Mayor Curtis, esteemed councilmembers, city staff, my neighbors, families, and friends, it is a great honor to represent the Asian American and Pacific Islander community of Kirkland with this proclamation. It is truly a great honor, especially at a time like now where there are a lot of hard things that are happening around the world. I just want to say to the city leadership, thank you so much for your continuing commitment to have a welcoming community for all. I want to tell our fellow neighbors a little bit about our Asian American and Pacific Islander community here. I and my family and my friends, we represent the Korean-American community, and we are proud and strong for the heritage that we bring into this community, in the arts, in the schools, wherever we work, live, play, learn, worship here in Kirkland. So it is just such an honor. And what I want to say in ending is to teach you a little bit of Korean, which is "가치 갑시다." Can you say that together? "가치 갑시다." Okay, let's say it again. "가치 갑시다," which says, "Let's go and rise together." 감사합니다, let's go.
Terrific job. Everybody stay up here, and we'll take a picture.
All right, all the color is leaving the room now, except for me. So, we are now moving on to items from the audience. This is a time in our meeting when you normally hear from the public. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. We will provide up to a total of 45 minutes for items from the audience with no more than six speakers on a subject, regardless of their position. If you would like to address the council during this Items From the Audience period, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or the posted QR code in chambers. For those participating on the phone, please dial *9 to be recognized to speak. Items from the audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please do not clap or applaud or otherwise openly express your agreement or disagreement with a speaker. When that happens, even when being openly supportive of a speaker, it can be disruptive to the meeting and discourage others from sharing a different point of view. We discourage people from using obscenities and making personal attacks against others. And we ask that you direct your comments to council, not to staff or audience members. In addition, because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings, regardless of content. As a reminder, state law does not allow items from the audience to be used for promoting, opposing, or discussing a candidate's campaign or ballot proposition. Kirkland prides itself on being a welcoming, respectful community. We want everyone to feel like they belong in council chambers, expressing their viewpoints. City clerk, who do we have first?
Our first three speakers are David Haynes, Paul Quinn, and Michelle Meston, and David Haynes is virtual.
Thank you. How are we doing?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to address Boo Kirkland, because it seems like they're spending $55 million on what is really a 1970s-era, 20th-century slum piece of real estate that only goes two stories, that if you could spend $55 million that would rebuild that place more robustly with six stories, you could put an incredible amount of people there and give them all the livable amenities, spaces, and braces that that location has. But instead, we have these shady speculators who are going to try and list some slum piece of real estate at around $260,000 a unit, and they're going to, like, drain the lifeblood of the working class, who are going to be punished for poverty because they're between 50% and 80%, where there's no allowance for a new building that would go higher in the levels, that would provide up to 100%, 120% AMI, that everybody would have a better livable space. Because if you look at the reviews of what they're trying to dump onto Bridge Housing that seems to have a conflict of interest of having Boo Kirkland, like, manage for them, it just, anyway, I wanted to, like, get off the subject and address the fact that Seattle still has really bad policies and their problems are being dumped onto the East Side, and the East Side needs to step up and improve the rules and the laws so that when there is a problem with a repeat offender who's been exempted from jail that's still connected to the underworld, that's never really been questioned and trespassed to find out where they keep getting the drugs, that sometimes are wigging out in between the drug tank at Totem Lake on the 255 headed back to the criminal enclave and hotspot of the U District, there needs to be an addressing of, like, people's desperate needs that result in some innocent old man last Saturday in the Totem Lake QFC being thrown in handcuffs because he's poor and looking at the Wall Street Journal, sitting down, probably put some cereal in his bag that he shouldn't have that was in his, like, shopping cart that looked the dickens. But yet, when you have these junkie-thieving repeat offenders who get to come out to the East Side to get some narcotics that want to gouge Medicaid, and you see them bothering people, like, in Walgreens parking lot, just wigging out, trying to scare people and, like, aggressive panhandle, it makes you wonder the priorities between crime fighting properly and mental health, drug addiction, and the shelter capacity that's lacking, that I think the East Side needs to step up within the King County Regional Home Authority and the housing and take the restrictions off and stop trying to backstab the working class on the East Side by not allowing it.
Mr. Haynes, your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Paul Quinn.
He is virtual.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me okay?
We can, go ahead.
Very good. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Paul Quinn, and I live in Somamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual who cares about fairness in how Kirkland's solid waste customers are charged for disposal. Right now, we charge our residents and businesses for disposal based on the size of the container being picked up. The effect of this message is to say we don't care about how much you put in or divert from the landfill. This approach is unfair, as it charges all people based on the size of the container rather than what's in the container. And we know this is wrong, as our water, gas, and electricity charges are all based on what we use rather than on the size of the wires and pipes connecting us to service. So I've emailed you handouts. Handout number one shows a graphic of the trend of the monthly cost for garbage disposal for your single-family residences. It continues to go higher and higher, and just recently, King County is telling us their disposal charge is passed on to this city's residents and businesses is likely to double in coming years. What is worse than this trend line is the city doesn't really allow residences or businesses to reduce their costs for disposal by properly diverting materials for recycling and compost. In fact, it unfair the increased cost to folks who do sort recyclables and compost and food scraps by charging them very same as others who are indifferent. This is unfair, and it can and should be changed by weighing the refuse each customer creates. To begin this change, I recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal, which will significantly improve the city's diversion rates. And I'll note, Smart Disposal is an innovative initiative, it's not a company. Handout number three outlines how Smart Disposal works in some detail. I'll now briefly describe what Smart Disposal is. Smart Disposal weighs each container picked up by the hauler at each single-family home. This system uses Postcards mailed to each resident, provides data specific to the resident, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup, and how their use of the utility compares to others in their community. I provided handout number four to show an example postcard report to customers, to residents. This system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset towards making better choices. We all know that feedback through measurement works, because water, electricity, and gas are metered, and they help us moderate our use. Smart Disposal provides the meters our disposal utility needs. I've spoken with staff and heard about what the city is doing with solid waste, and frankly, I'm concerned with the lack of urgency. The city's current initiatives do not provide sufficient impact to reverse these trends. We need this council to provide the urgency and leadership to drive Smart Disposal forward. What I recommend to you today is that the city implement Smart Disposal, metering and reporting to residents what we dispose of at the curb, provides fairness to help us abate the increasing cost of disposal, and this council should support their pricing for a disposal utility. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Michelle Meston. Please.
Do I show that to you, or?
Can you email it to us when you're done?
Oh, it's kind of hard, it's on the other camera. It's a ladder at the beaches. It represents the industrial-type ladder that is used at all the Kirkland beaches. And why I'm here is, as a senior citizen and someone who swims every day, I ask that you switch those to flat ladder steps, because we all step and walk on flat areas, we're not birds, we don't cling on to rails. And every other city that I've lived in, Bellevue, Somamish, lived on Somamish, and Kirkland, no, but Redmond, all of Seattle where I've lived, they all have flat ladder steps. And it's really hard for one like myself, or anyone, even ask kids. I took a kind of a poll, and I asked other seniors, and some kids that were jumping in said, "Yeah, talk to Mr. Waverly, have him switch these." So I've talked with, is it Jason, Justin, at maintenance, and haven't gotten far. And you might have storms, you might have to, I know from having lived on the lake, they might blow off, but you know, it's worth it. And I know we have the money in Kirkland, and I grew up here, North Shore, and I swam at Houghton, and I don't remember these industrial ladders at all. And I learned swimming here, Woodinville, Kajal Lake, I've taught swimming, and when you're in pools, when you're at people's places, you want to be able to get out of the water, especially for safety, for seniors, for those who have handicaps, it's just kind of a go-figure thing. And I appeal to you to do this, because I'm getting nowhere with the parks, and I've worked with Marion Bar Park for 11 years, so I know how it works. And I just would like to enjoy my swimming, and you can't go really in with the rocks, because that's the same thing. But to be able to go off the end of a dock and swim and then come back in, it would be most helpful, and I think it would help everyone concerned. And so I appeal to you that you would please switch your ladders, it's not that big of a cost, and make happiness for your swimmers, young, old, and alike. Here at Kirkland, as they do all over King County, including Seattle and everywhere, I've never been anywhere else where there's that, unless you're down at the docks and you're doing industrial type of transportation or bringing up. So I ask you for that, and I hope you will change it for this summer, and asking ahead now. So thank you.
Thank you. And why don't you email that photo to city council, and we'll follow up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who do we have next?
Our next three speakers are Kyle Sullivan, Carl Vanderhook, and Maria Hudson.
Kyle Sullivan.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Let's see if I can cover three things. First, as you know, I have concerns about the opportunity costs of the Kraken Iceplex project, but I do fully anticipate that the city will start the formal negotiation process tonight. Though I have concerns, I can recognize the potential of the community center space and for the project to kickstart the station area. So my ask during this process is that, one, the city drives a hard bargain, and, two, the city fully considers how to truly integrate the site with the station area. Sure, it's next to the station area, but there really isn't a good connection there right now. As the city's consultant noted, the Iceplex would be a regional draw. That means a lot of people are going to drive. Under current conditions, even in the best economic development scenario, where there are hockey tournaments and a new hotel is built in the station area, I expect a lot of people will drive to the hotel, and then drive from there to the Iceplex, and probably drive somewhere else after that. There's over a mile of distance from the former park and ride and 85th Street, plus you have to go up and over a hill. I would expect the area to get jammed up with cars pretty quick, like how Lake Washington High School does during the school year. So how can the city provide alternatives? And how can the city get folks to explore the station area without driving everywhere? Having answers to these questions is key to making the station area work to its fullest potential. Second, I served as the NSP coordinator for my neighborhood this year, and I'm very pleased that our gravel path project scored well, is included in the proposal tonight. But we in our neighborhood had pretty much a best-case scenario. We identified both a need and a solution beforehand, and staff signed on off that it was allowed, made sense, and was pretty much in budget. But if a project didn't take all of those boxes right away, it seems really difficult to figure out an alternative, like in Norkirk. The NSP coordinators ultimately decided to recommend the Norkirk project anyway, with the hope that the project could either be funded as is or changed in scope to fit under the budget for this year while still improving the area around Peter Kirk. I'd like to see alternatives for this project still explored to address costs, but of the options in the memo tonight, I would support option three, though that's option three in the next steps portion of the memo, not the executive summary, they're different. Finally, in the spirit of Bike Everywhere Month, I'd like to share that I'm leading a bike ride on Saturday with my friend Charlie. We're going from Totem Lake to downtown Redmond just in time for the first trains to run. We're going from Totem Lake to downtown Redmond just in time for the first trains to run for the new light rail extension. It's a public event. Anyone who's interested can find details on meetup. It'll be a lot of fun. Thanks.
You did it. All right. Carl Vanderhook.
Councilmember Curtis, Mayor Curtis, councilmembers. My name is Carl Vanderhook, and I was born and raised in Kirkland, and I attended Lakeview Kirkland Junior High, I still call it that, and Lake Washington High School. I am now raising my own children in Kirkland, and I am the NSP project coordinator for the Norkirk neighborhood. I'm here today to strongly urge you to approve option three, like Kyle said, in the memo, but at the end in the next steps section on page eight, to fully fund the six approved NSP projects at $411,500. Option one in the packet is unacceptable, given that an identified vulnerable population, grade-school children like my own, are at daily risk with lack of sight distance provided at the intersection. The NSP memo suggests that option one would make Norkirk ineligible to apply for future NSP projects for the next three years. This is not something that the school, the PTSA, the Norkirk Neighborhood Association have been made aware of or approved. This option defers student and pedestrian safety and does not align with the safer routes to school initiative and leads to inefficient use of city funds and an inordinate impact to school and the intersection functionality over an extended period. With the increase in costs of construction, maintaining a yearly annual budget of $350,000 for the NSP since 2014 is not feasible. As costs increase, so must budgets. In eight out of the last 10 years, the city has gone over the $350,000 a year budget for total expenditure on NSP projects. This year's NSP should not be an exception to this trend. The historical numbers in your packet give clear indication that the city needs to reevaluate the NSP budget this year and going forward. What is not mentioned in your council packet memo is that the NSP project cost estimates include a hefty and unidentified 60% contingency. I've included that in my emailed letter to you. The fiscally responsible path forward that is aligned with and represented of the NSP neighborhood panel consensus is to direct staff to reduce the inordinate amount of 60% contingency and thus make all six approved projects fit within budget. However, that option has not presented before this council in tonight's memo. Therefore, the closest option that appears is option three, which only asks council to increase the budget but does not disclose the true nature of what is driving the high costs of projects, that 60% contingency. Please direct staff to pursue option three, approving all six projects with an increased NSP budget of $411,500. I've also included links in your email to the change.org petition that I started with 500-plus signatures as well as a slide deck for your information. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right. Maria Hudson. Okay. All right. City Clerk, do we have anyone else?
There are no speakers sitting up.
All right. We are now closing items from the audience, and we are going to move on to special presentations. City Manager.
Sure. Okay. Sorry. Rachel. All right. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have a special presentation and some special guests to visit us. I want to introduce Rachel Conrady, who's our Bureau Planning Supervisor, and she's going to introduce our guests and they're going to give you an update. We're not looking for action tonight. We're looking for council to get a briefing and ask questions, and we're returning at a future council meeting for final action. Rachel, welcome.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and members of the council. I'm pleased to welcome tonight Jason Mulvey-Hill-Kunz. Jason is the Salmon Recovery Manager for the Lake Washington Cedar and Sammamish Watershed, also known as RIA-8. He has served in this role for 13 years and previously worked for several years coordinating salmon and ecosystem recovery efforts across multiple watersheds in Puget Sound. He strongly believes in the critical value of partnerships to the success of conservation and species recovery and considers the watershed-based model partnership among local governments and RIA-8 to be the model. Jason will be sharing about the work of the Salmon Recovery Council, at which Kirkland has been an active partner for many years, and the renewal of the soon-to-expire inter-local agreement that sets the framework for this partnership. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for having me tonight to address you. I believe I have slides. Are those?
We'll help you set those up.
Thanks for the introduction, Rachel, and I have to say you handled that last name pretty well.
Jason, we appreciate you making the trip in person. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Thank you very much. Well, as Rachel noted, I am here to provide you with a presentation to provide context for your consideration of the renewal of the 10-year interlocal agreement to support continued salmon recovery in the Lake Washington Cedar-Sammamish watershed, of which Kirkland is a part, and has been a member since the first interlocal agreement was signed back in 2001. So I'll cover kind of the salmon recovery context that we have in the watershed, talk about the recovery plan that we have in place and that we're working continuously to implement, talk about the interlocal agreement, provide a brief overview for you all, highlight some funding and accomplishments over the last 10 years during the current interlocal agreement that we're working on right now, and then look forward a little bit and provide some thoughts on where we're headed with the work. So real quick, I want to kind of provide a brief sort of timeline for you in terms of the salmon recovery effort that we've been undertaking. Since the late 1800s, the Chinook salmon recovery, or the Chinook salmon population in Puget Sound has declined pretty precipitously due to a number of impacts related to human development, whether that was logging or straightening rivers, things like that over time have really impacted this population. And finally, in 1998, the state realized that the population was significantly diminished and required recovery action. And so that's in 1998, the state adopted the Washington State Salmon Recovery Act, which set in place a recovery effort that was guided to direct state resources to support recovery efforts in local communities, not just in Puget Sound but around the state where there were endangered and threatened salmon populations. Then in 1999, the federal government followed that up with the listing of the Chinook salmon as threatened under the Endangered Species Act, and that's what really galvanized a lot of local communities, especially in Puget Sound, to come together recognizing that salmon don't really respect political boundaries, so they're swimming through all of our communities, and recovering them is a regional effort that all of the communities needed to participate in. I think at that time, there was also some fear that there would be maybe third-party lawsuits around take of the endangered species. This is the first time that an endangered species had ever been listed in such an urban area, and so I think there was a lot of concern around what that meant at the time. So the local governments in this watershed came together and said, all right, this is a regional issue. We need to tackle it together. It doesn't make sense for one of us to do a bunch of work and our neighbors not to do anything when the salmon are swimming through. So it was kind of a recognized shared responsibility at the time. And I think the jurisdictions realized that it would demonstrate that they were taking proactive action to address the listing and therefore would help with any potential lawsuits that might be brought against them for anything. In 2005, the first four years of the interlocal agreement were really spent on planning. We needed to kind of pull the science together, figure out what we wanted to do, and drive our priorities. And in 2005, that plan was completed and adopted. And in 2007, the federal government adopted the watershed's salmon recovery plan as part of the regional Puget Sound salmon recovery plan. And we've been working to implement that plan ever since. However, we did adopt a 10-year time horizon on the initial plan, recognizing that we wanted the opportunity to adaptively manage our efforts, check to make sure that we were accomplishing what we wanted to do, and change course if we needed to do that. So we did undertake a 10-year plan update in 20, started in 2016, and we finished that in 2017, renewed that plan, and got that adopted by all of our partners, including Kirkland. And that's the plan that we're currently implementing now. Salmon recovery in Washington State is rather complex. There are a lot of entities engaged in it. As I mentioned, the federal government is involved in terms of adopting the recovery plan for the endangered species, in this case, it's Chinook salmon in Puget Sound. So NOAA Fisheries is the federal agency that holds that listing and is in charge of managing the recovery effort for that. They coordinate and delegate a lot of work to the state through the Governor's Salmon Recovery Office and the Recreation and Conservation Office, which then also coordinates regions for salmon recovery, Puget Sound being one of those regions. And then those regions are further broken down into local watershed areas, of which RIA-8 is one of 15 watersheds in Puget Sound. And you can see us highlighted in yellow on that map of Puget Sound watersheds there. And I really want to, actually going back to that slide, the previous slide, want to emphasize that for Endangered Species Act recovery, what we're doing here in this watershed and around Puget Sound is different than how Endangered Species Act recovery is actually done most of, in most of the rest of the country. Because we're doing it from the bottom up, we're doing it from the local communities rather than having the federal government come in and do a top-down approach, which is what typically happens. And so it was a very unique structure here that's really driven by the local communities. So in our watershed, we do take a watershed-based approach. So all of the jurisdictions that participate in this work recognize that we're working at this geography, we're working at a watershed scale. All of the rivers and streams and lakes interact together, it's all part of a larger ecosystem here. We have two populations of Chinook salmon in our watershed. We have a Cedar River population and a Sammamish River population. So we're working to recover both of those species in different ways, same species, both of those populations in different ways based on their needs. And we're talking about adult fish as well as juvenile fish, and those, they need different things at different life stages in the watershed. So lakes are more important for juvenile fish, for instance, versus rivers, which tend to be a bit more important for spawning for adults. So it just depends on kind of where we are in the watershed for the actions that we're taking. And so our plan really focuses on the science that's driving our work. What are the populations? What's the current status? What are the goals that we need to do for our habitat restoration and protection efforts? It identifies the recovery strategies that are associated with those goals and are driving the implementation of the work that's going to get us to those goals. We have a capital project list established in the plan that continually gets updated and refined as projects get developed that have been kind of worked on by all of our partners, both local governments as well as nonprofit organizations, as opportunities to implement projects. And we recognize that it's not just projects that are going to get us to restoration and recovery. We need land use change, we need land protective regulations to help make sure that we're achieving the goals that we want to achieve, and we need to do outreach and education. We need to make sure that the public supports the work, recognizes the importance of continuing to have salmon in our local communities and that there's political will to do this work. This is a long, long game here. Salmon recovery isn't a couple-year effort. This is going to be a long-time thing. So we need to maintain that momentum. And then finally, we want to continue to do the science. We want to monitor. We want to be able to adaptively manage and course correct if we need to. So what does the ILA provide for us or help us do? First and foremost, it focuses on the implementation of the plan itself. It creates a governance structure. That's the Salmon Recovery Plan. And when I was looking at the makeup of the Kirkland City Council, I realized that you all probably more than any partner have the greatest number of council members who actually are familiar with the work in the RIA-8 Salmon Recovery Council. I think there are five of you up here tonight who have participated in the Salmon Recovery Council in some way, shape, or form. So I think that's pretty unique among our partners. And it creates a funding mechanism. So as I mentioned before, there's a lot of state and federal investment in the work. That council is guiding the investment of those dollars as well as local funds that we get through the King County Flood Control District. So there's decision-making around how to invest those resources. We do an annual work plan and budget to support the work. And then we do a lot of the staff team that I manage, does a lot of technical and regional coordination. We work with our partner watersheds. We work at the state and federal agencies and share information and work together on policy development, things like that. And as I mentioned, there have been multiple ILAs interlocal agreements previously, first one in 2000, but it's, we've kind of continued to recommit to this work just about every 10 years is kind of the cadence that we're on. So the current one ends, I think as Rachel mentioned, at the end of December this year. So we're right now working to get the new one renewed, so we're ready to go in January. So our work plan is really focused on making sure that we're implementing policy decisions, and that's really the role of the Salmon Recovery Council, to consider the policies and provide the decisions around investments. We're doing project coordination and implementation with all of our partners on a regular basis. We are doing that science, that monitoring and adaptive management work to make sure that we have the best available science applied to the work that we're implementing. And then we're really trying to tell the salmon recovery story. This is a really important, interesting story to share. There's a lot of great work that's going on in the ground. And a lot of what we're doing for salmon isn't just for the fish. It's really the like, the kind of things that we need to do to support our communities and make them more sustainable. So it's really a much bigger, greater effort that's involved here. So funding, really quickly, just to highlight kind of the funding aspects of the work that we're doing. The interlocal agreement creates a cost-share arrangement among the local government partners. There are 28 cities, 26 cities, two counties involved, and there's a cost-share formula that's based on the average of the percent population, percent assessed value, and percent area of each jurisdiction, and that determines the cost share for that specific jurisdiction. It's kind of a way to make it kind of an equitable arrangement for sharing that cost. And then we get a lot of grant funding, as I mentioned before, on average about $4.2 million each year from the Flood Control District, which goes directly to support projects and education and outreach programs and monitoring and research work. We also get the state and the federal money that I mentioned earlier as well. So what have we done over the last 10 years? Well, we've implemented, these numbers are based on actually nine years because we didn't have the latest values for this year that's actually happening right now. So I would say that we've probably implemented well over $40 million worth of project work, which is pretty remarkable in the last 10 years. And that's at least 200 projects, probably more like 230 projects if we count this year. And you can see the impact on the ground of what that restoration work has done. And then also a number of outreach and education grant programs that support a lot of our nonprofit program partners, doing really excellent work out there, engaging with the public, promoting incentive-based programs, things like that. And then the research and monitoring work that we're undertaking to make sure that we're tracking metrics and we're ensuring that we're bringing the best available science to bear. So looking ahead, where do I think our priorities are focused? We're going to continue that core work that we do with habitat protection and restoration. That's kind of the bread and butter of salmon recovery. We need to get that habitat back in order to give the fish a chance. The Lake Washington Ship Canal is a key bottleneck in our watershed. All the fish have to go through that area as adults and juveniles, and so making sure that fish passage is effective at the locks and that the water temperature and other impacts like predation from marine mammals and invasive predatory fish, we're trying to deal with all of those issues in that tight little space in the ship canal. So that's a big focus, to make sure that all that money we're pumping into habitat restoration upstream is realized. So those are those key survival issues. We want to work to improve the way that we're integrating salmon recovery work with things like stormwater management. I mean, the overlap is pretty significant in the areas that we're doing that work, and there's some natural connections. And we just don't do, in any, a lot of the work that we do, we don't do a great job of integrating those things, and we really need to do that better. And then we want to continue that monitoring and best available science work that we continue to kind of rest upon. So that's all I have for you. This is the team that is working on salmon recovery on all of your behalf, so I want you all to think of us as resources for you. If any questions come up around salmon recovery, you have excellent staff here at the city that we work with regularly, Rachel in particular. And so we've just really appreciated Kirkland's engagement in this work, and Councilmember Sweet is currently your representative on the Salmon Recovery Council, and I would take any questions that you all may have, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jason. It's a small and mighty team, right?
I like to think so.
Four people with all that work. So thank you so much. Councilwoman Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Jason, for being here. My first couple of years on the council, I was the My first couple of years on the council, I was the RIOT 8 representative, since have handed over the reins. But thank you for this, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your hard work. I wanted to ask a question, something you and I have talked about before, and I'm just, I'm going to ask you for an update, if you, and I'm kind of putting you on the spot. But it has to do with predation, and it has to do with the latest science and research on predation in Lake Washington, on these populations. When I was representing the council on RIOT 8, there were still a lot of questions about how shoreline features, like the shoreline features we have in Kirkland at just various stages, over, over history and whatnot, can contribute to predatory species, including invasive species. And there wasn't a lot of science associated with how those predatory populations might migrate to and from the bottleneck that you were describing at the Ship Canal, snack on juveniles, for lack of a better term, and then perhaps migrate back to our shorelines. Is, how are we doing, how do you feel like we're doing in understanding that part of the problem?
Yeah, great question. I don't say, I, I don't think that we have it completely 100% figured out, but as I, as I mentioned before, those, that monitoring work that we're doing, that research work, those, those grants, those resources focused a fair bit on predation. And that was just one issue that has just risen to the top because we're recognizing that there are a ton of impacts from predation on the, the small fish in particular. The Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service have done quite a bit of that work with the resources we've provided. What we've figured out at this point through that work is that we know largely what the, what the predator fish populations are, like which fish are having the greatest impact. They've, they've done a lot of research, catch work to figure out, okay, which fish are actually doing the, the predating. And so we have a handle on that, and we also now know, based on some radio tagging work that we've done, where those fish go throughout the lake and where they're concentrating themselves. And we've figured out that they are keying in, like in particular, when the juvenile fish are coming out of the Cedar River, for example, during those periods of time, those predator pop, those predator fish are congregating at the outlet of the Cedar River into Lake Washington. And so that's driven some test work to see if we can do some fishing, basically, net fishing to catch a bunch of those predatory fish at that time, knock their population back, and hopefully see a, an uptick in survival in juvenile fish. We haven't figured that out quite yet, but that's the idea, is if maybe we, we know we're not going to be able to do 100% control on these populations, they're just out there, there's, it would be too much effort to try to do that, but maybe we can target these hotspots at the right time of year and knock their population back enough to give the salmon a chance. So that's what we're trying to do.
Well, thank you, Jason. So Ken, I have a follow-up question. So, and this is real, this is simply to try to understand what science is telling us. We, we talk a lot about how man-made features on our shorelines in our suburban environment impact juvenile salmon. Do we have an understanding of how those features affect the, the vitality of populations of predatory species?
Yeah, some, some we do. We, we know that overwater structures, for example, are places where predatory fish like bass will hang out and they'll hide under there, and they'll, they're an ambush predator, so they're waiting for those juvenile fish that need the shallow water shoreline areas to, to kind of rest, find refuge from predators, they want to get into those shallow water areas. If they run into docks and piers, they have to go out into deeper water, and that exposes them to that predation from smallmouth bass, another, you know, yellow perch and some other fish like that, that will tend to hang out around those types of structures. We also understand that like bulkheads and shoreline armoring, instead of having a shallow water beach, what, what's happening with the wave action is it's actually digging the shoreline deeper, so you have deeper water right at the water's edge, and that's not very hospitable for those juvenile fish. So they're facing a lot of those impacts, and obviously, most of our lake system is privately owned and has small little sections, and so they're running into that a lot. And we've, we've worked to basically do what we can to restore all of the publicly available shoreline spaces, and now it's a lot about working with private property owners to understand how they can steward their properties in ways that support salmon, and providing incentive programs to help folks do that if they're interested in doing that. So that's a, a lot of, some of the education and outreach, as well as some of the incentive-based programs that we're focusing on. We have a shore-friendly program, and we have a salmon-friendly lakes program that's being implemented by the Mid-Sound Fisheries Enhancement Group, that's helping do some of that outreach and incentive work, so.
So that's something Kirkland residents can participate in?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you got a good question.
Helps just to understand what the whole picture looks like. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jason, for being here. Good to see you again. I'm entertained, because the picture you had of the, the council was back when I was on it, years ago, I spotted myself there. And one of the things I remember from my time on the council was the first research that came out that had isolated the salmon-killing tire dust, where they said, hey, we think we've discovered something that's a factor. And then the next steps were going to say, how do we go mitigate and deal with this? Can you talk anything if, what, this isn't a RIOT 8-specific issue, but what are the RIOT, what's RIOT 8 or RIOTs in general doing about that particular issue?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and that's an example of some of the, the work that we're trying to do on council, is bring that science to all of our partners so that you all, as elected officials and decision-makers, get that opportunity to hear that science firsthand from the researchers. That was, you know, NOAA came and they had just figured out, we don't know what it is, but it's something in runoff from the roads that's affecting fish. And since then, they've, they've dialed it in, and they've done the studies, and they've figured out that it's this one particular tire dust chemical, it's a preservative in tires, when it oxidizes with the environment. In tire dust, it, it creates this kind of other compound that's particularly toxic to fish, and they've done an amazing job to just pin that one down and know that that's what it is. So that's, I think, was the first biggest issue, is actually to figure out, what of all these potential chemicals was the culprit? And they've done that, which is pretty remarkable. And so now it's about, how do we, how do we identify the places where that toxic chemical is present? It's probably everywhere, but there's certainly hotspots. And that's really what a lot of the work going on right now is to figure out, where are these really strong areas where this chemical is entering the waterways and being able to address those areas? And, and I'm happy to note that so far, and it's just cutting-edge right now, King County's been working on it, Washington Stormwater Center's been working on it, they've found some relatively inexpensive ways to deal with it, and it's actually pretty simple. It's just basically implementing some bio swales that have a compost-sand mixture into the places where the runoff is coming, and, and allowing that water to settle out in that soil column will capture a lot of that chemical before it enters the waterways. So if, if those, you know, we can scale that up and be able to implement those kinds of fixes while at the same time trying to do the product control upstream and try to work with the tire companies to get that preservative out and find an alternative, that's probably the two things that we need to do right now. And so the state's really focused on that, the legislature just approved more money to support Department of Ecology, to help address that work, King County's continuing to work on it, a lot of the city, cities that are working on, you know, your MPDS stormwater permits are focused on that issue. I think it's one where the integration between salmon recovery and stormwater management is 100%. It's, you know, it's right there, it's giving us that opportunity to really move in that, into that integration space. So I, I think it's positive, even though it's kind of a nasty thing that's going on, I think it's a, it's moving in a positive direction, and I'm hopeful that we can start moving into treatment at a larger scale soon.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you again for coming, we'll give you the rest of your beautiful evening before the sunset, but we appreciate you being here.
Right, well, thank you very much again for the consideration and for Kirkland's participation to date.
Thanks, Jason. I don't know about the rest of you, but we could all talk about that all night. All right, we are now moving on to the consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor to present the audit of accounts and to highlight the proclamations we have on consent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $6,876,48.45, and bills in the amount of $13,3,853.99. Tonight, the mayor, on behalf of city council, will be issuing three more proclamations tonight. First, Affordable Housing Week invites community members to learn about affordable housing efforts in the city and in the region, and to explore how they may support policies and practices that promote stable and affordable housing for all. Next, Bike Everywhere Month is an opportunity for community members to get out and roll through Kirkland on the cross-Kirkland corridor and city greenways to enjoy the benefits of bicycling for recreation and for sustainable transportation. Finally, Older Americans Month celebrates our community's older adults and demonstrates the city's commitment to acknowledging the contributions and value of older residents in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Madam Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Black, to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments? All right, City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Pascal.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Yes.
And Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Consent has approved, 6-0. All right, we are now moving on to our business items. I think this is one of our longest business agendas we've had in a while. We have nine items? Eight business items. So we will work to be efficient.
We will.
The first business item is expansion of the Planned Action Ordinance and Development Agreement for the Park Place Kirkland Urban Project Adoption, City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a short presentation tonight, since this was the subject of a public hearing at the last council meeting. Here to give you that is our senior planner, Tony Levitt, and we are looking for council action.
Thank you very much. So some background regarding the extension of this ordinance. In February of 2015, the city council adopted a planned action ordinance for the Park Place, now Kirkland Urban Project. Following the adoption of the planned action ordinance, the city council adopted a development agreement in August of 2015. Both the PAO and development agreement were set to expire on March 1st of this year. On January 27th, the city received a letter from Google, the owner of Kirkland Urban, requesting an extension for the PAO and the development agreement for the project. The extension is needed to allow the development of the last project phase, the east phase. On February 18th, the city council passed Ordinance 4897, which temporarily extended the expiration date of the PAO and development agreement to June 1st of this year. The intent of the temporary extension was to get status update regarding the mitigation measures in the PAO and to allow the city to gather pu- feet, public feedback at a public hearing. Per the language in the PAO, the ordinance and the related development agreement can be extended by the city council following a report from the CIPA responsible official and holding a public hearing. The PAO for the project included a list of mitigation measures that were required to address impacts of the project. Public works staff confirmed that all capacity improvements to the address, to address transportation impacts have been completed, along with all sewer and water improvements. On April 15th, the city council held a noticed public hearing. The applicant provided testimony regarding the status of the project and the reason needed for the five-year extension. Two members of the public provided testimony as well. One commenter supported the proposal but requested the council limit the extension to fewer than five years. Tonight's staff has recommended that the council approve the ordinance to extend the planned action ordinance and development agreement to June 1st, 2030. The extension, again, will provide an opportunity for the last phase of the project to be completed and without any added administrative burdens. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Short and sweet. I'll entertain a motion.
I don't have it in front of me.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move Ordinance 4898.
Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Councilmember Pascal, to move forward Ordinance 4898. Any discussion? Councilmember Sweet?
Um, the only hesitation that I have with regard to, to this process is the fact that that project will sit vacant potentially with nothing on it for the next five years. And I, I guess what I'm interested in is, I think some of us had some discussion offline, is there any way for us to either compel or to work with the developer, or work with Google?
Google.
Google around activating the property? I mean, pickleball courts, some kind of activation where people can actually be present at the facility. Right now, all it is is a giant cyclone fence. And, and I don't, I know that's not built into this, I don't know if there's been any discussion of it, of some level of activation with the, with the applicant before, but that's what's missing in this for me. I'll, I'll support it, but it just seems like a big, giant waste of space for five years.
Anyone else? I will respond in that the city manager and I have met with Google and made a number of suggestions on what they can do with that space, and it did come up last time we talked about this, so we'll continue to have that conversation. Any further discussion? All right, the question is on approval of Ordinance, Ordinance 4898. City Clerk?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Pascal.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Yes.
And Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Ordinance 4898 has been approved, 6-0. We are now moving on to Item 9B, contribution to Bridge Housing for purchase of View Kirkland Apartments' approval, Resolution 5861. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have an opportunity for a smart investment, to make 200 units of coveted affordable housing through a potential partnership with Bridge Housing in the Totem Lake area, also based on agreement they've reached with Amazon's Equity Fund. Here to give you the presentation is our planning supervisor, Denise Russell, and we're looking for council action. I would note that the request we have for the money is currently already budgeted in our housing authority, excuse me, our housing REIT authority that the council's already given us. So we're actually looking for agreement on the, on the agreements and not necessarily the budget itself, so. That I will turn over to Denise.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you for having me. So tonight, I'll, I'll try to be brief, I'll give you a quick overview of the Bridge Housing and the View Kirkland Project, some of their funding sources, and the affordability requirements. We also have Patrick Tippi on the, the virtual line, he's the investments manager at Arch, and he's available if you guys have any questions, funding-related questions. So View Kirkland is a 200-unit apartment complex in, it was built in 1977, it's located about half a mile north of the village at Totem Lake. It has 50 studios, 110 one-bedroom units, 42-bedroom units, and they're currently rented at rates around 60 to 80% of area median income, though those aren't currently covenant-restricted. The property is currently zoned TL1B, which is a high-density zone that allows for mixed-use development. Bridge Housing is a nonprofit affordable housing developer active on the West Coast. They currently have some projects in Seattle, a couple in Bellevue, and one in Bothell, and this would be their first in Kirkland. Bridge was selected as the buyer of View in a competitive process on March 11th in 2025, and approached the city shortly thereafter to request a nominal contribution so that they could qualify for their property tax exemption. The purchase price for the apartment complex was just over $55 million. Bridge secured a $22 million award from the Amazon Housing Equity Fund in March, along with internal financing and a national equity fund loan. A $10,000 contribution from the city will allow Bridge to qualify for a property tax exemption under RCW 8436560, which is an exemption that's available to nonprofit organizations that own affordable housing units that are financed in whole or in part by a public entity with funds that have already been designated for affordable housing. So Bridge will enter into two separate affordability covenants with this deal, one with the city and one with Amazon. The city's covenant, in exchange for our $10,000 contribution, will require five units to be affordable to households earning at or below 50% AMI or area median income for 20 years, and those would be evenly distributed among unit types. Bridge will reserve the first five units that become available of each unit type to meet that criteria. And after that 20-year period, those five units could be extended at 50% AMI. And after that 20-year period, those five units could be extended at 50% AMI with additional public funding and a new covenant. But either way, they would continue to be restricted for the additional 79 years by the Amazon covenant at 60% AMI. And the Amazon covenant requires a 99-year affordability period for all units. 156 will be restricted at 60% AMI, and 37 will be restricted at 80% AMI. And Amazon does require that 75% of the two-bedroom units be reserved for households earning 60% AMI or less. And the covenant also limits the annual rent increases to 4.5% regardless of inflation. Two of the units will be reserved for property managers, so those aren't included in the affordability totals. Bridge is planning to honor existing leases, so current residents will not be displaced. And as units become vacant, income-qualifying households will move in. Bridge, because they don't have control of the property yet, they haven't surveyed, they haven't surveyed the residents, the current residents' incomes, but they will do that once the sale closes on May 22nd and will offer lower rents to current residents if they qualify under the new affordability levels.
Have a question. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Yeah, thank you. Existing residents will not be displaced until the end of their lease or forever?
My understanding is to the end of their lease terms that they've agreed upon already, but I think Bridge's intention is to work closely with the residents to keep them there if they qualify for the, for, as, you know, under the 50% or 60% AMI.
Well, okay, I have more questions on this. I'm concerned about people, if somebody's lived there for 15, 20 years, and they're reaching the end of their lease in three months, and they are above these limits, then are they being displaced?
Yeah. Patrick Tippi, I don't know if you are available to answer or give a little bit more detail on that, but you might have more. It's online.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks to your question, Councilmember Chisen. As I understand, the intent is that the new owner, Bridge, would be open to extending leases with folks at market rate rents, what those might be, but understanding that there is a pretty frequent churn and vacancy of units, so they do anticipate leasing those to income qualifying households once there are vacancies.
Okay, I don't feel like I've received, if I was a tenant there, I don't feel like I've received an answer that would make me feel secure in knowing that I can continue to live there.
I will point out that the rent increases are capped at 4.5%.
But I agree with you.
That's the market rate, yeah.
I agree with you. They're capped at 4.5% for people that qualify to live there. But if Amazon buys the property and then somebody that's making slightly too much money no longer qualifies to live there, are they going to be displaced?
City Manager?
Yeah, I was gonna ask Patrick if he knew, would they automatically guarantee that we'd extend the lease, or is it something that they would do on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I think, I can't answer that definitively, given the not being able to speak on behalf of Bridge, but I have seen at other properties with similar financing that those are extended and rents are evaluated under the new ownership with existing tenants to mitigate the displacement risk.
Well, thank you. I don't want to disrupt your presentation, but I'm contemplating making a motion that would defer voting on this until we have more concrete answers. I can't vote yes on this, not knowing if we're going to be displacing our residents in this building. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. I think I just started on this one. Okay, so Bridge has requested a $10,000 grant from the city so they can qualify for the property tax exemption that I mentioned earlier. And as Kurt also mentioned, the $10,000 will come from existing budget that's already allocated for affordable housing, which is a requirement of the RCW statute. And the city will enter into both a funding and a regulatory agreement with Bridge that's been developed collaboratively with the city and Arch staff. And so the project ultimately preserves existing rental housing, converting it to long-term affordable units and advances the goals that we have for housing in our city's comprehensive plan and housing strategy at a minimal cost to the city. And they are slated to close, the property sale closes on May 22nd, and staff recommends that council adopt the resolution, 5861. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with some questions? Councilmember Pascal.
Yeah, just a question. So when, first off, I'm pleased that this will allow more affordable housing here permanently going forward. I wasn't familiar with this location, this facility, these facilities, until this came across us. And, you know, as I started looking at it a little bit closer, you know, it comprises a pretty large parcel in Totum Lake, and I think you said that it's a high-zone for high-density development. It's nearby services, it's nearby transit station. It's in an area where I think we would want to see a lot more sizable and dense development over time, you know, with units being affordable like these. I was wondering if the 99-year covenant prevents this parcel from ever being redeveloped for 99 years?
Not that I know of. I think we do have the ability to work with a developer to extend or amend a covenant if they were to redevelop the property.
So if the property owner wanted to redevelop, they would be able to?
Yeah, I believe so.
City Manager?
Say, I think in both cases, our covenant and Amazon's covenant would be, need to be redone, but my guess is if there was a development that would create more affordable housing in a partnership, I think both parties would be open to doing that.
Yeah, I think that's the basis, is just, I would, I would want the ability to go, to do something of significant size there, where you're getting a lot more affordable units, given the location, and it just seems to be an underutilized parcel. Thank you.
I agree. Deputy Mayor, do you, are you, do you have your pen raised?
No.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have some thoughts, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. You know, I think Councilmember Tim Chisen's questions are similar to some questions that I had asked of staff, just wanting to make sure that while for this project, we're, this is a great opportunity to create some affordable housing, we don't want, we want to make sure we're not creating another problem through this for people that may not meet the income qualifications. Can you talk at all about the timing of this? You know, given this closing date, are we able to get some more information here? Because I've heard it from you, Denise, we just heard from Patrick, that it's kind of intentions, and I think we're wanting to hear it from Bridge. And wondering, do we have the time to get that clarification?
So the council does meet again on May 20th. If you postpone this to a date certain and take action on the 20th, you could still have the final action, but they would need to know before they close whether the city's going to make its contribution. Otherwise, the property tax exemption, which is key to the financing, doesn't happen, so.
So you're saying we could bring this back on the 20th to answer our final question?
I get the answer to that question.
And still give them time?
I do see Patrick has his hand up. We did ask him to see if he could reach Bridge, so maybe he has more information.
Patrick, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm trying to reach, get a confirmation on the answers from various council members. The modeling from Bridge does show not all the units being income-eligible for at least five years, which does show that there would be honoring and renewing of non-income-eligible households for a duration of time, not just upon lease renewal in the next 12 months, but they are modeling that be an extended period until all units would be income-qualified.
Does that satisfy you, Councilmember Chisen?
I appreciate the, I'm sensitive nature of this project. I appreciate the great goals we're trying to achieve. I guess what I would like to see is contractual language that a current resident would not have their rent increased for more than 4.5% annually, for as long as they want to continue to live there.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a good question. I'm glad it's been asked. I did read the language in our agreement that seems to suggest that a tenant won't be asked to vacate if they don't qualify as long as the next available unit is leased to a qualified tenant. I read that to mean that no one was going to be asked to leave, but I share the concern that we nail this, nail this down before we take action, as long as we have, I do want this to happen, so I don't want to do anything to keep this from happening. At the same time, I'd really like to nail down this question, because something I understood, it feels like there's some uncertainty around it.
Thank you. Anyone else? City Manager?
So my recommendation, I don't think we can get certainty tonight, but I think we can get certainty at least, whether it is or isn't, by the 20th, but the council will then have to make a decision to do or not do by the 20th. So we could postpone this and bring it back for action on the May 20th council meeting.
Okay, thank you. I think Deputy Mayor, did you have something?
I was wondering, is, would it be helpful to have any direction to be prepared to act and kind of signal our support for this, given this particular question? Like, for example, if we were to get some information that talked about a policy, I don't think I'm at, looking for a contract change that Councilmember Tim Chisen is saying, but just looking for some information that's not secondhand on Bridge's policy on this. And so is there a way to, is there anything you need to be able to say, we're able to make the closing deadline with the payment and signal our intention to be prepared to act after the council meeting on the 20th?
I mean, it's theoretically possible, that depends on how strong, you could give me the authority to sign the deal if that, if they say that they're going to do that, but you could also wait and have it come back and, because the answer could be no, they might say no, and then the council have to decide whether you want to still proceed anyway, right? And so maybe it wouldn't be unanimous, but I think the most likely indication is that they will. And so if you wanted to modify the resolution to say, give the City Manager the authority, if the answer is yes, that I could go ahead and execute, we could postpone this to the end and draft something quickly to do that, if you want to do that tonight. So that would be the way to get at that.
And truthfully, is the question, would we really walk away from this if the answer was no? I mean, because it's an amazing opportunity for us to add more affordable housing in the city. It's a small investment on our part, so I don't, I think it's a legitimate question, but I don't think that I would walk away from this opportunity if the answer's no. So let's move this to the end of our business agenda and see, let's strategize on how to move forward on this.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that? Councilmember Tim Chisen?
I would like clarity on the contractual responsibilities and contractual rights of current residents, and not what the intent, or the good nature, or the maybe plans of this future building are. And if we're, this is a 1970s building with low rent and presumably seen many senior citizens that have lived there for a very long time at a rent that's probably well below market rate, so I am concerned about the current residents. And if we're going to be clearing out residents for other people, I would be willing to walk away from this deal. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna set this aside, move it to the end of the agenda, and we'll, during the break, we'll decide how to move forward.
Sounds good. We can cover some options for the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Possibly reach Bridge to get an answer before.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just call it, can I call it staff's attention to Section 3, Subpart F, on E-page 300 of the packet, 299 and 300? Simply, I would like you to take a look at the last part of that covenant, and that's the question I have. Does that apply to current residents only some resident that moved, that qualified, moved in? It clearly applies to a resident who qualified at some point, moved in. What's unclear is whether it counts a current resident at the time this covenant is adopted, and that's what, I just want to call attention, that's what I'm looking at and what my discreet question is. Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll see you again. We are going to move on to 9C, Ice Skating Facilities Restaurant and Community Center Development. City Manager?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are looking for action tonight on approval of resolution to award the RFQ. Now, we're gonna give, this presentation is gonna be given by our Deputy City Manager of External Affairs, Jim Olpes. He's gonna give the presentation, answer questions, and then we're looking for action.
Thank you, City, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about the Ice Plex and Community Center Development. We have an RFQ that has concluded, and I'm going to give you a briefing on that with our recommendation. This is also known as our Seattle Kraken Project. And I thought I would start the presentation tonight with the recommendation, which is that the City Council approve Resolution 5862 to select Seattle Hockey Partners LLC, DBA, the Seattle Kraken, and Generator Studio as the developer for the Ice Skating Facilities Restaurant and Community Center Project, and to authorize negotiations on a series of agreements, there are several, to advance the development of the project and to satisfy the public benefits as defined by council. So tonight, we're talking about the RFQ for who builds the facility. There are also agreements that have yet to be agreed upon as to who would operate the facility, and we're working on that, too, and I'll explain all that through my presentation. But by way of background, and this is all articulated fairly well on our Seattle Kraken Ice Plex website, you could see the timeline starting in December of 2023, when the Kraken came to the city unsolicited with a proposal for an iceplex. We have documented throughout the process, and March to September of 2024, we had multiple meetings on this topic, and then on September 17th, the council approved Resolution 5645, establishing a negotiating framework with the Kraken. We are still working and negotiating under that resolution and under that framework. In the fall of 2024 to early 2025, we conducted, staff conducted evaluations, economic analysis, and community engagement on the proposal. And then on February 24th, very specific to this presentation, the city issued a request for qualifications. Now, this is to identify developers for the Ice Plex Restaurant and Community Center Project. These are the entities that would actually build the facility. Now, the RFQ process, as I noted, on February 24th, was launched on February 24th pursuant to our statutory authority in Chapter 3542. This is related to leases involving cities. Staff issued this request for qualifications, and we only actually got one response, and that was the response we're going to talk about tonight, which was jointly submitted by the Seattle Hockey Partners and Generator Studio. We did provide an update on this process in April 15th as well. Just because there was only one response doesn't mean we accept that response. We still have to do our due diligence about that response. And this is the criteria that we used in order to do that. The RFQ identified the following categories. We looked closely for previous experience in similar projects, including references, and I'll talk a little bit about what they submitted. We looked for expertise and key personnel and/or team partners for identified roles, like who is going to be part of the project, the project understanding and the proposed strategy for success to deliver the building on time and on budget, and what their approach was to project management and delivery. And of course, we looked for the groups that had financial resources to do it. When When we completed our review, we did evaluate, and we do recommend the Seattle Kraken to do it. And these are the key takeaways in order to make that recommendation. First, the team presented is very high level. They have significant local experience on related projects, including work with local governments. There are several examples in their track record, the Kraken Ice Plex in Northgate, for example, and the council has seen that on field trips. Folks in this RFQ were involved in the Seattle Seahawks Training Facility in Renton and Memorial Stadium, the Memorial Stadium rebuild. So we did see that significant local experience and experience in doing this type of work. The proposal, we felt, also demonstrated sufficient financial resources to complete and design the construction. We will work closely as we iterate through this work, this project, to further explore who the general contractors they'll be selecting are and the use of various contractors that might provide subwork. We are also going to work closely with them on the project schedule feasibility. It is a very aggressive schedule, which is a good thing in many ways, but we also want to test the feasibility of those things, including, we still have negotiations to conduct, there's local permitting issues, community space collaboration, and we have stormwater infrastructure goals that are now a part of this, regional stormwater, not just the stormwater requirements for the actual facility itself. We do feel, staff does feel, that the remaining issues can be resolved, and we feel like we have some good momentum on that. So what's the council role on Resolution 5862 before you? Well, the city manager is actually authorized to award contracts following an RFQ, but we do have the option to defer under 3.85-110 under the Kirkland Municipal Code now to the council for this decision. And given the high-profile nature of the project and the use of this property, the Houghton Park and Play, which we affectionately call it now, the city manager is recommending that the council make this selection. Of course, we have given our recommendation. Resolution 5862 is presented to you for your consideration tonight. Now, the council may approve this resolution, you may amend it, or of course, you may reject it. We are prepared for all scenarios, including modifying the terms should you desire that to be the case, to align with the goals for this project. If the resolution is approved, staff will proceed with negotiations with the Seattle Kraken and Generator Studio as directed by this Resolution 5862. Now, this, of course, as I noted, is about the construction of the facility. There is also a parallel negotiation going on, consistent with the framework established in Resolution 5645. And this is the actual give and take about the operation of the facility, all of the details around public benefit, and how the actual facility will be, the city's portion and the Kraken's portion will be operated. And these negotiations are designed to ensure alignment with the council-defined public benefits. It is our plan to come back to the council with regular status updates throughout the negotiation process on both of those items, and if final agreements can be reached on all project details, including the operation of the facility, consistent with the council's established framework, staff will return to council for final approval for the entire project to move forward. Madam Mayor, that is my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim? Anybody want to make a motion? Councilmember Sweet?
I would like to move Resolution R. 5862, selecting the ice skating, what is it? Selecting the Ice Skating Facilities Restaurant and Community Center Developer.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Pascal, to move forward Resolution 5862 to sup the RFQ. Any further discussion? Councilmember Sweet?
I just want to say, this is just another step, right? So, and we've taken incredibly baby steps on this project, so I think this is going amazingly well. I'm still very excited about it, but I think, again, we can't move forward beyond this unless we take this step. So happy to make this resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Sweet. I think we've been very thoughtful, very thorough, and very methodical in stepping this forward in a thoughtful way, and I've always been concerned about the, you know, what-if liability, and I think those questions have been answered from the city attorney and by you, Mr. Lopez, and so I want to, you know, this is a big, big, complex deal, and I want to thank you for your thoughtful and methodical approach to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I also will support this motion. This is incredibly exciting for our community. I am going to keep my fingers crossed that we're going to see women hockey players at this facility also, but yes, I think this is the next step to take. Question is on the Resolution 5862. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Jim. Congrats.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're going to do one more, and then we're going to take a break. So we are going to move to scope of work for a dedicated sexual assault legal advocate in Kirkland. City Manager?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've had a chance to talk to the council about this several times, and you gave us feedback on a potential partnership for a pilot program with the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. We are coming back to you now with, we hope, final scope of work. We're looking for final council comments on that. Once you agree with the scope of work, or if you have any amendments, we will take that back and turn it into a contract with CASEARC. Here to walk you through that is our Senior Management Analyst, Andriana Kebble.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I have five slides tonight, and I'd like to start with a brief reminder of what is being proposed in the pilot program. Then I'll walk through the March 4th council feedback and how I've incorporated it into the proposed scope of work and draft evaluation metrics. For that section, I've built in a couple of touchpoints for questions, feedback, but please feel free to stop me as we go if there are questions on the material. And then finally, I will go through next steps and timeline. So as a reminder, this is a proposed pilot program in partnership with the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, an accredited nonprofit community sexual assault program to provide one full-time dedicated Kirkland legal advocate to serve up to 60 Kirkland clients through December 31st, 2026. In my conversations with CASEARC, they intend to fill this position with an existing legal advocate and then utilize the funding to backfill their vacancy. We anticipate being able to hit the ground running and initiate the program no later than July 1st. Highlighted on the screen are three reasons why staff recommends contracting out for this service. The first is that CASEARC is a designated community sexual assault program as defined in state law. This means that the records and communications between the legal advocate and survivors are privileged and exempt from disclosure and discovery and records requests under the Public Records Act. The same protections do not apply if the legal advocate was employed directly by the city. Second is the ability to access these resources through a single entity as a one-stop-shop provides a more seamless experience for survivors and better customer service. And finally, contracting for these resources is less expensive than hiring a city employee. All right, this is the slide where I'm going to walk through the feedback received from the March 4th council meeting and show how it's been incorporated into the draft scope of work. And as a reminder, this was developed in partnership with CASEARC's chief program officer as well as other key leadership at CASEARC. Visible and accessible, there was a keen interest from council that the legal advocate be located at City Hall. The scope of work's been updated to reflect that the three days per week that the advocate will be in Kirkland, they will be located at City Hall. As a reminder, they are going to work one day remote and one day at the Renton office, the CASEARC office in Renton. Staff's original proposed framework for the pilot included that the legal advocate provide advocacy to those who live and/or work in Kirkland. Council asked that that be broadened to anyone assaulted in Kirkland, and the draft scope of work now reflects that change. I'm bundling the next three points of feedback. Provide proactive advocacy and outreach, coordinate with partner agencies, and provide educational presentations. Defined in the scope of work, the legal advocate will make direct connection with survivors, attend internal meetings with appropriate City of Kirkland staff, and external meetings with community partners, including 8 to 10 educational and resource-based trainings to various audiences, including schools and service providers. The draft scope of work proposes a final report at the conclusion of the pilot and updates to council at a cadence of at least every six months. That include metrics on the number of survivors that engage in advocacy services, the number of coordination meetings attended, number of presentations given, additional outreach efforts. Finally, a qualitative metric is helpful to gauge levels of satisfaction from the resources provided through the pilot program, especially as positive outcomes for survivors look different for each person. CASEARC has a survey they currently use that measures client satisfaction by asking survivors if they felt supported and were able to identify their next steps available to them. This metric and survey is included in the scope as well. I want to pause there and ask for council feedback or questions on the scope and evaluation metrics.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thanks, Andriana. You know, this is helpful, actually, you walking through, you know, our comments from last time and how the scope addresses them. You know, one of the things that I was thinking about and that I've heard is that CASEARC offers family services to those loved ones of the survivors and how they can best support them through that trauma. So I was curious if the, if the scope, do you feel the scope includes, or, let's see, assumes that this advocate will direct family and assist family members of the survivor and get, and direct them to kind of the resources and other education materials that CASEARC does offer? Is that, do you feel like that's in the scope now, or would that be something that we could add?
I feel like it would be good to add it. I know CASEARC has the capability to, and currently does, offer support services to friends and family, loved ones of survivors, but I do think proposing an amendment to the scope would be helpful.
Thank you.
Do you want to?
Would you like to?
I didn't know if there's other questions, but yeah, I would, I'd be happy to propose an amendment to, I think, did you actually?
I have it ready for you if you'd like to make that amendment.
Let me make amendment. Sorry. Here another discussion. I would just, I would, I would ask for amendment, add item D to the outreach and education here that's shown on screen, that the legal advocate will work with the support networks of survivors to direct them to CASEARC resources, programs, materials, to educate them on how best to help survivors through the process.
Madam Mayor, are you looking for a second?
I am.
Because that's a formal motion. We're doing that as a motion.
Yes.
Okay, second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councilmember Pascal, second by Councilmember Black, to add the council amendment, and Councilmember Sweet was asking why I was asking for amendment, because we planned to put, bring this on consent, so I just wanted to formalize this action.
Yeah, sorry.
So, would you like to speak to your amendment?
I mean, I think it's, I think the point is, is that the survivors need the services from CASEARC, but, you know, those that actually help the survivors heal are their loved ones, their family, these are often family members or friends, and they also need resources and education on how best to help the survivor. So I think all of those things kind of work together, and we just want to make sure that we're looking holistically here.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Question is on the Pascal amendment. Any further discussion? Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. Has the provider, are they aware of this amendment and?
They are. I spoke to them this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Councilmember Pascal. Any other feedback for Andriana? Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Are we at the end of this discussion?
We are. I have one more slide covering next steps, but if it's helpful to see the incorporated changes.
I'll just briefly touch on the confusing nature of the state statute that, where if a sexual assault advocate works for an independent agency, that their communications are privileged, but if they work for the city, that they're not privileged. I don't know why that is, or if that's something to send to our legislative work group, but that may be a statute that was created by external agencies and not, oh, are you? Sorry. I don't, I don't want to make a, I don't know, I mean, I think, I want to kick that to our legislative working group, because that's a statute that makes zero sense to me, zero. And, and I'd like to know if there was an RCW amendment, if we would do, I don't, we might not necessarily be doing anything differently, but when the City of Kirkland employs a domestic violence victim's advocate and separately contracts a sexual assault victim's advocate, that's confusing to me. And the majority of the reason why we're doing this is because of a state statute that I can't understand. So for what it's worth, I would think that the City of Kirkland and the legislative work group should look at that state statute and try to understand the underlying reason for its existence or crafting in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Diana's in the back of the room taking notes. Anyone else? I see no other comment. Oh, Councilmember Black?
Madam Mayor, just so the public know, Diana's our Government Affairs Manager. She's vigorously nodding her head. I'm the Chair of the Work Group, and the answer is yes, we'll be looking at that. And thanks for bringing it up.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's.
We'll figure out, we'll get to the bottom of it one way or the other.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will incorporate the amendment and come back for final council approval.
Thank you, Andriana.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a quick break. We'll be back at 9:20. We'll be back at 9:20.
And we are moving on to item nine E, the 2025 Neighborhood Safety Program, NSP Recommended Projects. City Manager.
Okay. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we want to present with you a series of options. We're looking for council to give us final direction, and we'd bring it back at the May 20th council meeting for final decision. I will confess that the difference in option numbers between the executive summary and the middle thing and the next steps is my fault as the city manager, the final reviewer. I actually tweaked the executive summary and the body, and I missed the next step, so my apologies. However, the presentation going to see that Daniel has done is based on the executive summary option list and the body option list, not the next step. So option two, which has been called for, is the same as option three you heard under the testimony. So that will be clear in the presentation, but I just wanted to make sure you guys knew I did that, so my apologies. With that, I'm going to give it to Daniel Lazzo, who is our Neighborhood Safety Program Coordinator here, and take it away, Daniel.
Thank you, Kurt. Hello, council. My name is Daniel Lazzo. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator in the City Manager's Office, here to present today on, for a request for your approval, on the 2025 Neighborhood Safety Program and projects. So thank you, mayor and council. So to dive right in, we're going to touch on five items tonight. The ask, the purpose of NSP, the process, the projects itself, and open it up for any questions, comments, or concerns. So today, I'm seeking council approval by motion on the prioritize NSP project list. I've laid out the three options as Kurt, the city manager, has mentioned, highlighted in the executive summary. These are numbered but not in priority order. Option one funds all six recommended projects, but limits the scope of one high-cost project to 75K and implement the full scope over the three program cycles. This would result in a total of 326K. Option two would fund all six recommended projects at 411K and direct staff to find additional money. Option three funds the top four projects at a total estimate of 375K. So to jump right in, so where does NSP fit into the transportation strategic plan? You can see out of all the programs, NSP makes up about 1.8% of the 20-year TSP program budget. There is also budget allocated specific to projects. So why do we do NSP? The main purpose of this program is empowerment and collaboration for the active neighborhoods in Kirkland. Residents work with city staff to address pedestrian and bicycle safety issues, and what's great about this program is the collaboration. City staff provide their expertise and neighborhood leaders provide their lived experience. There may be gaps that city staff don't see, because they don't see what's happening in the neighborhood every day, and for neighbors, they may not know what projects are already in the pipeline, or what would be the most effective safety measure. So this collaboration is necessary to move the best projects forward to improve safety throughout the city. The current funding for this program is at 350K for projects under 75K per project. Each neighborhood association can submit projects for the consideration. Projects must be on city property and may include bike lanes, walkways, trails, crosswalk improvements and additions, traffic calming measures, and streetlights. Since 2014, 77 projects have been completed throughout the city. Each year typically four to seven projects have moved forward, and you can see all the projects throughout the city on that map over there. Now for the process, residents can suggest a project year-round via R. Kirkland, and that list is shared with neighborhood associations at the NSP kickoff meeting that all started in October. Once the neighborhood association collectively decides toward one or two projects, they submit it as an idea to staff for review, and this review time is really necessary between the idea submission and the project conference to research the site and develop preliminary costs and scope. So in that scoping includes construction, design, administration, and other additional costs as the estimate. After staff have evaluated the scope and cost estimate of those ideas, staff make a recommendation on what to submit for the application at the project conference. This is what staff say what will and will not work with the project, give alternative ideas, and answer any questions on the technical side of the project. Each neighborhood then submits their applications and moves towards the panel for further evaluation. So for both panels, they run on a zero to 100-point system. The technical panel of staff focus on the safety problem and the viability of the solution of the project, and then the neighborhood panel meets to present their projects to each other and evaluate the community benefit of the project. The neighborhood panel meets at least twice to first present the projects, and then after both the technical and neighborhood scores are tallied, then discuss which projects move forward to council for approval. For 2025, the panel selected six projects to move forward, the top four scoring projects, and then the two lowest-cost projects. I'll talk about each of those six shortly. I just want to show briefly here the low priority projects as you saw in the memo. So project number one is from the South Rose Hill Bridle Trails neighborhood. It is to improve an existing path on the east side of 132nd Avenue, northeast between northeast 70th Place and northeast 66th Street, adjacent to Snyder Corners Park. This request comes from a power wheelchair user in the neighborhood who had a hard time accessing the crosswalk at the intersection of 132nd and northeast 70th Place. Staff would trim down the shrubbery blocking the path and overlay a hexagonal plastic grid with gravel for ADA. The majority of the cost would come from the possibility for retaining wall as the path is against a slope on the side adjacent to Snyder Corners Park. Next is project number two from Juanita neighborhood. This project is a complete paved walking surface from northeast 140th Street, adjacent to the Kirkland Church of Christ property. This project did not make the cut in a pass cycle, but was resubmitted and scored higher in this round. Staff would essentially make the path asphalt and need to move the mailboxes that are in the right of way. Project number three is the Highlands neighborhood. This project is to install an extruded curb walkway curbing on 112th Avenue northeast and northeast 87th Street and 7th Avenue. This aligns with a neighborhood greenway project underway at the intersection, and there has been an issue of cars parking in the pathway leading to the CKC. Project number four is from the Norkirk neighborhood. This project is next to Peter Kirk Elementary School and is to improve pedestrian visibility by moving the crosswalk and stop bar closer to the intersection. The current raised crosswalk would be removed and replaced with a speed cushion. To go more into detail on project number four, this project was highly favorable in the community criteria scoring from the neighborhood association panel. The panel also directed staff to consider honing in the scope further toward the project limit of 75K. Upon evaluation from staff, the project would be three separate crosswalk improvements. Option one provides a new solution to the program, which is to fund this project for the next three years without needing to reapply. The only restriction would be that the Norkirk neighborhood cannot apply for new projects until this project is completed. Option two and three would still fully fund this project and direct staff to find additional funding. The next two projects are the moderate priority list and will be requested to move forward as a package to council as part of the neighborhood association panel's requests to approve the top four priority projects and the two lowest-cost projects. Project number five is from the Moss Bay neighborhood, and this project is to install a bike rack connecting to the CKC from Kirkland Ave. and 9th Street. Right now bicyclists are coming up at a ramp that was made due to a utility interrupting the curb. The project will give proper access to bicyclists as they enter the CKC. Project number six is from the Central Houghton neighborhood. This project is to install speed limit signage on the cross Kirkland corridor between the Google property and Terrace Park. There is a new interpretive sign up the stairs of Terrace Park into the CKC as people are stopped. It would be a good reminder for bicyclists to, especially e-bikes, to slow down. One of my last slides is a map of the 2025 recommended projects and the 2024 projects slated to be completed. The 2024 NSP projects are currently in preliminary design stages, with construction starting either fall 2025 or spring 2026. In addition, the 2021-2023 NSP construction was designed and advertised for construction as one package. There are six sites currently in construction for 2021-2023, with the construction slated Again, the ask, the options are option one, to fund all six recommended projects but limit the scope of one high-cost project. Option two is to fund all six projects, and then option three is to fund the top four. So, this is a proposed motion, so thank you for your time today and let me know if you have any questions, comments, concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Great program. Great presentation. Thank you. Any questions for Daniel? Anybody want to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to proceed with option two.
Second.
And move by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilor Black to move forward with option two. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. First, Daniel, thank you for the presentation and thank you for your work on this program. The mayor and I have been meeting with the leadership of various neighborhood associations and have heard kudos about your work on this universally. Nice job, and it's great to see this here today. We also heard, the mayor and I also heard from the Nor Kirk Neighborhood about the importance of this particular project for the crosswalk near Peter Kirk Elementary. This is my neighborhood. I'm familiar with this intersection, and by moving the crosswalks together, you avoid the problem of vehicles trying to make turns and getting caught in between the crosswalks where you've got kids crossing. And I recognize that this is larger than the budget, but one of the things I love about this program is it's the opportunity to deal with neighborhood-specific issues, hearing from, hearing from the community on issues that might not be on the radar of city staff, and I think that's what this is. And I'd like to see a way that we can make the Nor Kirk project happen. I would also note the memo states that the Totem Lake Neighborhood didn't have any submissions because they don't have an active neighborhood association. As we look at this program moving forward, Daniel, I think we may need to look at submissions beyond neighborhood associations. If Totem Lake Merchants, for example, had a project, that's the sort of thing I would like to be able to enable. And then, clearly, as we have run into this, we may, as we get into budget decision, we may need to look at options because we're bumping up against the ceiling. For every transportation project we're doing, we're seeing cost escalation, and these are no different. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pascal?
Thank you. I just share my kudos that Deputy Mayor said to both you, Daniel, and also the neighborhood volunteers and folks that participated in the, in the program. I know it was a lot of hours, a lot of time through the process. I had a couple of questions and then some comments. Could you go back to project number six? So, it just got me thinking that this is a very targeted location for speed limit signs, and I assume there must be a reason for this location. Maybe, and the question for me is, why not put up signs along the entire corridor for the 15 mile per hour? Is that something that, if, are there? Yeah, or, I mean, in a consistent basis, maybe just provide some comment. I heard Councilmember Sweet say that they're all on the, on the cross Kirkland corridor today, but is that true?
In terms of?
Speed limit signs?
Yeah, I know that the transportation team has trying to put signage out to reduce that in terms of some kind of campaign. This would be the specific 15 mile per hour signage between the start of the cross Kirkland corridor for the Google property and then close to where the new signage is, the interpretive sign that people stop at, above Terrace Park. And so, the request is in addressing that because when the interpretive sign was installed earlier this year, they had issues of people just standing in the trail, reading the interpretive sign, and so this was a reaction to that from the neighborhood.
Okay. Interesting. And then, on, on slide, let's see, the slide where the projects that weren't funded, or I guess, yeah, weren't funded, a low priority. There's a couple kind of low, lower-cost ones here, relative, it's all relative, but like the Finn Hill project or the South Rose Hill, like the Finn Hill one, the school warning sign, those are projects that, you know, the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, I think begs agencies to apply for grants, and some of that money goes unused. So, I think that's how we funded some of our school flashers in the past, so hopefully we could maybe look at that location, get, you know, outside money for that. So, I hope maybe that would be included in the school speed zone, like evaluation that's going on, or you could maybe just pass that on to Public Works. In terms of comments, I agree, this is the right mix of projects. I, I support option two. I recognize that some of the costs, the high end of the costs are, take us over the budget amount, but these are ballpark costs at this point. You know, they could come in lower, they could come in at the high end. I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll do what we can to, you know, be as efficient and fine, bring those costs in at budget, but if not, you know, I'm fine with, with option two. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Black?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Daniel, and thank you to my colleagues for their comments. And I just wanted to explain why I'm supporting this and why I seconded the motion. So, I realize that, I realize that requiring this come to council, for the council to make the decision about increasing the budget above what was set, you know, can cause a lot of consternation and, but actually, but I do actually appreciate the process. I wouldn't want staff and the panels and the neighborhoods just to necessarily assume that, that we're, that the council would exceed the budget. It makes perfect sense that there, there is a budget. I agree with Deputy Mayor. We may have to look at what the, what the budget is in future years. But in any, but I think having a, having a budgeted amount and then having this come to the council for discussion and an opportunity for the council to recognize the value of the projects and, and approve the slight overage. And as, as Councilmember Pascal said, these are rough numbers, so we may come in well under these amounts. And then, knowing that I've, I've had a chance to talk to staff, knowing that we do have, you know, dedicated funding that is available, that is available in the budget for, for a project related to school, also makes it really easy to support this. So, just want to explain where I'm coming from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor, Tim Chisen?
Thank you all for supporting this. I think that these are good projects. I also think that in future years, to Deputy Mayor's point, we have several locations in Kirkland that have concentrated spots of multifamily housing in Totem Lake and Juanita Village and other places like that, and that we should look at reoccurring complaints, concerns in those areas because the lack of neighborhood associations will probably lead to not a lot of projects within those regions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sweet?
I kind of support everything that's being said so far. I just happened to do a tour of the CKC this last weekend, so I saw, I thought I saw lots of 15-mile speed limit signs, but if I didn't see enough, I believe in more. Quite frankly, coming into this, before I read the memo, I was not inclined to go with a higher number, but it was really well, well-laid out. I can really see the value of this project at Peter Kirk. I've driven by that for years and years and years, and it, it is a concerning area. So, I'm glad we're moving forward with option two. And Daniel, just as a normal council member, I have heard your praises sung by neighborhood folks, so whatever great work you are doing out there, please know that it's being noticed.
All right. Questions on the motion to approve option two? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to nine F, Public Works Maintenance Center Facility Expansion Plan Update. City Manager? That's okay. I, I know.
We're getting there. We're getting close. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. We wanted to do a check-in. One of the work program items is to expand and enhance our Public Works Maintenance Center facility. We want to check in with you on some properties that we've been looking at and evaluating, and our Facilities Manager, Leanne Skipton, is going to give you the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Thanks for having me this evening. This will be an update on a topic that in 2024, council received two updates from the facilities plan. That was in June and again in August. Want to recognize and say thank you to the council for including this in your work plan. This is such important work, and we're so glad that you're continuing to support it. We also want to say thank you to the council for including this and the budget for the 25-26 approved budget and CIP. So, thank you. As you may recall from prior presentations, we talked about property acquisition being a recommendation from the Public Works Maintenance Center Facility Plan. And when we were looking at acquisitions, there were criteria that we presented for strategically located options and also properties that supported operational priorities. And so, we had a list of properties that were presented that we used those criterias to evaluate those properties. As we evaluated each of these properties, we identified that the adjacent residential properties and the DeRue Market Restaurant property were not well-suited to the criteria that had been established, so those items were removed from our consideration early on in this process. We continued to use that criteria to narrow down the list of properties that we were considering for acquisition and proceeded to narrow those down to some just key locations. Initial contact was made for those key properties in Q3 of 2024, and then we engaged and contracted a real estate broker, a commercial broker, to act as our agent, and that broker began communication with those key property owners in Q4 of 2024. They, we then proceeded, when council had approved the expansion of the Public Works Maintenance Center in the 2025 budget, our next step was to then perform appraisals of those key properties in 2025. And now we are at the next step of providing letters of intent to the property owners that have best matched our criteria, and then our negotiations will then commence at that point. I do want to refer to the city attorney. I believe that there's some additional options that will be considered at that point.
Oh, we just wanted to take a minute to note that, as we sort of discussed in the memo briefly, but wanted to add a slide just to make sure it was clear. We are conducting these negotiations under threat of condemnation. Always sounds bad to say that. There are benefits to property owners for having that and, and benefits to the city of sort of approaching in that manner. So, we just, if I wanted to leave space to have questions, if there was any questions about that, since we talked about it in the memo, and to note that, you know, if, if negotiations are successful, we'll return with that draft purchase and sales, sale agreements for consideration. If they aren't successful, or if we think that it might be helpful to proceed with parallel paths coming forward with a condemnation ordinance for council consideration. We've done that before where we keep negotiating, but we bring a condemnation ordinance to make sure that we're able to move forward timely. I don't, I think we'll be able to be successful here with just negotiations, but leaving space for that and just giving you a heads up.
Any questions for city attorney?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
That is all.
That was it?
That was it.
All right. Any questions for Leanne? All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Maybe just note, for the record, that was in the memo, that if you do eminent domain, you do are required to understand a lot of pay fair market value, so there's still a negotiation with the owner and you have to pay a fair market.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to nine G. We're finally going to talk about the proposed updates to Tourism Development Committee membership and voting. I think this has been pushed out four times. So, City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this has been moved a couple of times. We appreciate the opportunity to check in. We're not looking for final action tonight, but we are looking to get your feedback, so we'd bring back an ordinance for action in the future. As noted in the memo, currently, the Tourism Development Committee has one-year agreements, and we want to, one-year terms, and we want to make it more consistent with the rest of our boards and commissions. So, here to give you that presentation is our Government Affairs Manager, Diana Hart.
City Manager, can I interrupt you for a second? Did you say we're not taking action?
Today is to give direction, final direction.
All right. Thought we were voting on this ordinance tonight.
Have it as voting? Okay, I did not have it as voting, but if that's, but if you're ready to vote once you see it, then we can do that, too.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
Good evening, council. So, by way of background, the Tourism Development Committee is one of the numerous boards and commissions at the city and operates as a city's lodging tax advisory committee to advise the council on utilization of the city's lodging tax revenues. TDC's membership is established in state statute. The chair must be a council member, and at least two members must be representatives of entities that generate lodging tax revenues, such as hotels, and at least two members must represent organizations eligible for grant funding from that lodging tax revenues as established in state statute. The two external groups must have equal members of seats for each group. In Kirkland, the TDC has three for each of those groups, and an additional council member serving as vice chair. Most other Kirkland boards and commissions have two four-year term limits, but the TDC has annual appointments with no term limits. Further, the TDC directly votes on recommendations for funding awards and includes members that are eligible for that funding, requiring additional care to comply with the city's codes of ethics to prevent conflicts of interest. To align the TDC membership terms with those of other boards and commissions and streamline appointment processes moving forward, staff recommends assigning seat numbers to each of the external seats of the committee, assigning staggered term expirations to each seat, and limiting members to two four-year terms in alignment with other boards and commissions. Further, staff proposes changes to clarify participation in discussions or voting by members related to financial benefits of their organizations, but they may still participate in discussions and voting related to overall budget-related items, approvals, or, including overall grant awards. So, next steps tonight, just as a little bit of background, Councilmembers Sweet and Falcone, in their capacity as TDC Chair and Vice Chair, have notified the current members of the changes that are proposed in this ordinance. Council has an opportunity tonight to provide feedback on the proposed, proposed ordinance. We can either incorporate that, those, any changes into a future approval, or you can take action tonight. And regardless of whether council adopts the ordinance, staff will begin recruiting for the currently vacant positions and proceed with reappointment for current members interested in continuing service. And then I have a proposed amendment from Councilmember Arnold ready on a slide for, when you're ready for that part in the discussion. But with that, turn it back to you.
Thank you. Councilor Sweet is chair. Do you want to add anything?
Sure. I mean, I think we've come about this at a, at a, at a really good time. We've had the same membership of this committee basically for five years-ish, over that, maybe even. And while all of the members are working hard and trying to do a good job, we, we really, I think Amy and I both feel that we need to sort of flush ourselves out, and since we're both kind of new to the committee, have a lot of energy about doing it. I also feel like we need to encourage some of the, some of the organizations that we haven't worked with, like the Chamber or, or the Downtown Association, to step up and become a part of these discussions around the TDC, not just how we spend lodging tax monies, but how we address the issues of tourism overall. So, I think this is exciting, and it's an attempt by us, I think, to sort of infuse this group with a new energy, anticipating our new economic development person coming on board, and the work that we've targeted for ourselves in terms of moving forward, both as a tourism destination as, and in, in an economic development fashion.
Wonderful. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the work by you and Councilmember Falcone on bringing these forward. I support the direction we're going here. There's a couple of concerns I have. First is that there are specific seats on the Tourism and Development Committee that are reserved for people that collect the tax, hotels. We only have a limited number of hotels, and while I support the goals of getting some rotation of number of hotels, and while I support the goals of getting some rotation of the representatives, I fear that we have a limited population right now. We're going to fix that, but right now, we only have a few hotels that are eligible for some of those seats. So, I would want to enable people to serve again, as long as, after two consecutive terms and a break, and ask a staff to prepare an amendment that would allow that. For other boards and commissions, when we have a unique situation like this, the city council has voted to suspend our rules and make an appointment that we normally wouldn't other make. But for the TDC, it's governed in the Kirkland Municipal Code, so it's not that easy to be flexible. So, I wanted to have an amendment that would provide for that flexibility. And basically, it says that you can serve no more than two consecutive terms, and then would have to take a year off. And at that point, we could decide whether someone would be something, somebody would want to reappoint or not.
You address that?
So, if there's any, any comments, I would make the motion to amend.
Thank you. I'll take a second.
So, I would make the motion to amend this, as shown on the screen, with the changes on packet page 344, line 46, and 345, line 69.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I don't think we've actually moved the ordinance itself yet.
Dang. It's your fault.
Well, the memo says this is for discussion.
I had to go back and look. The script says we're voting tonight.
So, that is my fault. So.
Okay. You're right. This is, we don't need to second this motion. We will discuss this amendment.
So, can we say, direct, then my motion is to direct staff to incorporate an amendment for the consent calendar next time, as shown on the screen.
Any discussion on Deputy Mayor's suggestion? Councilor Sweet?
I want to gratefully accept the amendment. I think it's actually a really good idea because getting the hotels on board has been difficult. We are energized to try, to try a little bit harder. But I know that, in my experience, my previous experience on the TDC, I think we had one member who was on it for like 12 years.
Yeah, the, there was a previous hotel representative that was on for 11 or 12 years. But back then, we also had pretty consistent hotel representatives serving. Now, we've been struggling to talk our hotels into participating.
Yeah. So, I, it's up to us to try and figure out a way to put a little bit of excitement into this process.
Any other questions or objections to Deputy Mayor's amendment? All right. I think we all like it. It's a very thoughtful addition. Any other comments or questions for Diana? Okay. We could.
Could.
We could vote on this.
If you're ready to act, you may. You can move it and then do the amendment.
So... All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll buy a round of drinks for everybody here. I'll move adoption of ordinance 04900, an ordinance of the City of Kirkland relating to the Tourism Development Committee, amending sections 5.19220 and 5.19260 of the Kirkland Municipal Code, as presented in the packet of materials.
And the amendment.
And as, well, we'll do the amendment in a second.
Okay.
You want a second?
A second. It has been moved by, I'm going to mess this up. It has been moved by Council Mayor Black, second by Council Member Sweet, to approve ordinance 4900. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I guess we're doing this good. We'll check some stuff off the list. I would like to move that we strike up to two four-year terms on line 46 of page 44, and that we add, members appointed by council shall not serve more than two consecutive four-year terms without being off the TDC for at least one year in between terms. Once at least one year is passed, the council may reappoint a member to serve in the TDC for additional or partial terms at line 69 of page 345.
Second.
And moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Council Mayor Black, to do the Deputy Mayor Arnold amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All right. We are now looking at the motion to approve ordinance 04900. City Clerk?
Has amended.
Has amended. Thank you.
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Pascal.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes. Ordinance carries 6-0. Thank you, everyone. I like checking that box. All right, we are moving on to 9H, which is 2025 Legislative Session Update. City Manager?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we are here to check in. This is not the final check-in, as we still have governor action to wait for, but here to tell you what happened with session, when it ended, is, once again, our Government Affairs Manager, Diana Hart.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So, the 2025 session ended on April 27th, so the legislature has packed up their bags and is now back home in district. The governor has until May 20th to act on legislation passed in the last five days of session. As a reminder, the governor can sign legislation into law, allow legislation to go into law without his signature, fully veto a bill, or partially veto a section of a bill in its entirety. So far, he has only partially vetoed an emergency clause from one bill, and has not fully vetoed any legislation so far. As a further reminder, legislation that was not passed this year returns to its house of origin, where it can be considered again in the short section, short session next year to round out the biennium. So, again, with that caveat of all this information is predominantly preliminary until May 20th. There's a few that have been fully approved, but I'll quickly kind of run through some big, exciting updates, some less exciting updates, and sort of next steps for where we're going from here. Starting with the great news, both the Kamaiken Gym Expansion and Peter Kirk Pool Ducking to support future year-round use were included in the adopted capital budgets, each for $515,000, which is above what we requested. So, extremely, extremely excited to have both of those funded in a year where a lot of funding was not granted to organizations around the state. We secured the elimination of the REIT II Flexibility Sunset, allowing permanent use of REIT revenues for affordable housing and homelessness capital projects. House Bill 1791 also syncs the uses of REIT II and REIT I increments, granting us even more flexibility for these funding sources moving forward. Finally, Extended Producer Responsibility, or EPR, for packaging and paper was passed after several sessions to adjust and right-size this very comprehensive legislation that shifts the responsibility of the recycling network on packaging and paper from consumers to the producers of the goods in the first place. On the not-as-great-but-still-pretty-good-new-progress news, two new bills this session that, despite being a new concept of the legislature, made it almost all the way through the process, which is a pretty good sign for big bills in their first year, and gives us a lot of energy going into next session if council chooses to elevate them as priorities again for next year. On the noise camera legislation, there was a push at the end of the session to have the legislation incorporated as a budget proviso, but that was unsuccessful. Staff are now working closely with the provider to complete the pilot report, as were required under their original pilot proviso, to support legislation improvement for next year. And then, on Kirkland's PD's request legislation to align state law with federal best practices in our jails, nearly made it out of both chambers, but unfortunately, got caught in some larger politics about legislation at the last minute that kept the bill from passing out of the House. If this legislation continues on our agenda next year, we'll conduct some additional stakeholder work, review the scope and scale of the legislation, and adjust our advocacy strategy to get this legislation over the finish line next year. Taking a look at some of the other updates that we've discussed throughout session. First, starting with the property tax cap lift. This proposal had a very strong showing this year, but unfortunately, there did not seem to be support from the governor for inclusion in a final revenue package, so it was removed prior to passage in the final week of session. This unfortunately does not bode well for passage of this proposal during this governor's term, but we'll continue to monitor it, and AWC, I'm sure, will continue to have it be one of their top priorities. Next, the parking minimum legislation was passed without the amendment requested by Kirkland to acknowledge the local planning circumstances that may warrant additional parking, parking needs in some areas or on some parcels. For jurisdictions over 50,000, like Kirkland, will have 18 months to implement this legislation after it goes into effect in state law. This bill is on the governor's action, excuse me, is on the list for governor's action at the bill signing event tomorrow. Council also indicated support for the rent stabilization legislation that also passed this session and is also on the list for governor's action tomorrow. Of note, the bill has passed the legislature limits rent increases to 7% plus inflation up to 10%. And the legislation has an emergency clause that would make it take effect immediately upon passage by the governor. Finally, on this list is a, oh, sorry, moving forward, is a proposal to increase revenue options to support public safety. If a jurisdiction satisfactorily meets all the requirements of the legislation, which at this time, in the early analysis, we believe that we currently do, a jurisdiction is eligible to take an additional 0.1% sales tax increment for criminal justice purposes, and would be eligible for a short-term grant program. The criminal justice purposes under the bill is a very loose definition that applies both to activities that substantially assist the criminal justice system, and then further defines that to include domestic violence services, staffing adequate public defenders, diversion programs, reentry work, local government programs, to reduce the number of people interacting with the criminal justice system, including reducing homelessness and improving behavioral health, community placement for juvenile offenders, and community outreach and assistance programs, alternative response programs, and mental health crisis response, including recovery navigator programs. So, pretty comprehensive list of what could be funded under that proposal. As we look to 2026, first, the Legislative Work Group will debrief the 2025 session later this month before going on recess for the summer. And then, before you know it, we'll be kicking off the development of the 2026 legislative agenda. We'll start with outreach to our staff across the city to understand how they're impacted by legislation passed this year, and if there's any changes or improvements needed to current law to advance Kirkland's priorities. We'll also meet with each council member over the summer to understand your priorities and understand the work that you're doing on all the regional boards and commissions that might help inform the Ledger Group as they start putting together a list of proposals for council's consideration this fall. One big difference this year from normal mid-biennium interims is that we have a lot of legislative seats across the state up for confirmation at the general election, as there were many appointments going into the 2025 year session. So, we'll keep close eye on how those elections turn out over the year, both for any impacts to our own delegation, but also impacts to the overall makeup of the legislature this session. So, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have, and turn things back to you.
Thank you. Councilor Black, would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Diana. Really, I don't have any questions. I want to thank you for your presentation. Thank you for all your hard work throughout the session. It is a, it is a lot of work. And actually, I, I, I maybe, maybe it's a little bit premature, because we're going to have one more discussion like this after we know what the, what the governor actually does. Yeah?
Potentially. We could do that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then, it's, this is the perfect time for me to say. The fact that, I mean, going into this session, everyone had pretty low expectations for what we could possibly accomplish, just given the challenges of this legislative session for our legislators with the well-publicized budget deficit, and their need to bridge that gap through cuts and new revenue proposals. It was unsure whether, there's two things that were really unsure. It was unsure whether cities were going to get any capital budget requests at all, and it was uncertain whether any meaningful policy bills were going to get passed. And several really meaningful policy bills got passed, some of which are on our legislative priorities, some are not. The ones that, you know, getting EPR and the REIT extension done this year is really, really remarkable. And it's really remarkable for Kirkland and to have received the capital budget amounts it received. And that's a testament to the strength of our team, and I'm really mainly talking about our professional staff here, and our lobbyists in Olympia. Although, I think our Legislative Work Group does a really great job, too. But I also, it's also a testament to the amazing partnership we have with our, our delegation, our nine, our nine legislators who represent different areas of Kirkland. So, I just want to stop, pause, take a minute to appreciate how much we got accomplished, considering we thought we might go over for this session, and, and we didn't at all. We got some really important work done. The REIT extension is, it's wonky and easily, not easily understood, but it's really meaningful for Kirkland to be able to fund, help fund projects to get affordable housing built as part of a mosaic of, of solutions that we need to deploy in order to actually have affordable housing created or constructed in the city of Kirkland. So, just thank you. Thank you to my Legislative Work Group partners. Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Adriana Campbell, another staff member who supports us. Thank you, the city manager. And I don't think our, our lobbyists are listening, because they're probably on a beach somewhere right now. But thank you to them. So, just kudos all around.
Councilor Sweet, did you want anything?
I did want to add something. I, what I, being married to a legislator, I hear a lot of the other side of this. And what I want to do is, I want to take credit for the, the well-managed way that we deal with the legislature. They have such a high appreciation for the, for the Kirkland system. And I'm going to, I'm going to go back seven years to Deputy Mayor's role as the chair of the Legislative Work Group. That's when we started to develop this process with Lori and further with Diana. They anticipate us coming down there with, with ideas that they can work on, with legislative, with new legislation that they can work on. And things that come from Kirkland are considered in a very high caliber of review. So, I'm really proud of that. And I, and I don't just hear it from my husband. I hear it from lots of legislators. And as we know, what Kirkland thinks about certain issues is, is taken into consideration in Olympia by other cities and by lobbyists. So, well done. It's been a great year. It's my last year doing this. So, it's been quite an experience. Now, if I can just get Larry to have his last year doing this, I'd be in good shape. Anyway, thank you all so much. Diana, you've done a really correct job. It's just been amazing. And Adriana, we have all grown so much. So, thank you.
I am going to add, because this, I've done this for six years, and this is the hardest, this year was the hardest legislative session we've ever had that I've been involved. We went in with, we knew we were going to have challenging budget issues. We lost two very admired legislators, which really took a toll on everybody. There's a lot of uncertainty how to work with the new governor, what's happening federally. So, I'm really proud of how the team came together and, and pulled through and did good work. And we are a little self-congratulatory, because we do have a great process, and we managed to deliver, we managed to deliver for this community. So, I also want to express my gratitude to our staff and my fellow members, and to our delegation who worked so hard on our behalf and worked so well with us. So, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Probably not. So, thank you, Diana. I appreciate it. Both of you, thank you. All right. We are going to go back to item 9B, which was contribution to the Bridge Housing for Purchase of the View Kirkland Apartments' approval. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I will defer to you on next steps.
Thank you. So, let me just maybe introduce the topic here as we, what we're trying to do is adjust the resolution to have the council give approval, subject to the city manager being able to negotiate a commitment that- negotiate a commitment that people won't be asked to vacate if they're not income-eligible for the units. Should I not be able to secure that, we'd come back with the same ordinance on May 20th to basically have the council decide whether they wanted to proceed at that point, but based on what we're hearing so far, it looks like we'll probably be able to secure something like that in the next few days. So, wanted to show you that potential draft amendment that we've come up with. Huge thanks to Denise Russell and Darcy Ayers for working on this over the timeframe.
Okay. So, before you is amended part of the resolution, which is on E-page 275, line 38, we're proposing to add the underlined language here that gives the city manager the opportunity to negotiate with Bridge to ensure that the current households will not be required to vacate a unit based on their income eligibility.
Okay. We need a second to read it. And Patrick, thank you for coming back also. I'm sure you're ready to be done. All right. Okay. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
City manager, do you suggest a timeframe? Are you suggesting a timeframe on that?
Yeah, it would be, well, basically, they have to close on May 22nd, so the next council meeting will be the last chance for you to talk about it. So, my goal would be to negotiate this the next, like, three days, two days, like, by the end of the week to have an agreement. And then, if not, then to bring you an ordinance for, for a decision on 20th.
But I'm asking a timeframe
Oh.
of, that, that they wouldn't be asked to vacate the unit.
Oh, I see. You're saying, how, how long could they stay if they're not below the income level?
Well, if you negotiate forever, great, but if it's a number of years, then...
Yeah. I think that would be a detail that I don't want to work out. I, I don't think anyone wants anyone who's living there now to be unable to stay if they want to stay. I, I think we'll be able to achieve that, but I just have to sit down with, with the Bridge and figure that out.
I, I, I trust your discretion, so I'm in favor of this amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor?
I appreciate coming back with this. Does this particular language require this to be part of the agreement, or could it be a side agreement? I recognize we've got multiple players here with the city and Amazon and Bridge, and I don't want to force a bunch of, a late revision to derail this, as everybody else has a review if there was, you know, a side discussion on this. Do you feel like this gives you some flexibility?
We tried to leave this flexible so that there was, we could decide where to best place it. In some quick communications with Bridge through Arch, we, we think we'll be able to get into one of the two agreements that you've seen, likely the regulatory agreement, but we're still working that out. So, we wanted to leave it more flexible. This doesn't require it in a specific agreement.
Thank you.
We also, I should mention, we did ask whether it was possible to extend the closing date, and what we have learned is that there were several backup offers, and the owner is not willing to extend the closing date. So, that's our deadline is the next, by, by May 22nd.
Councilmember Black.
Okay. Okay. Well, that begs the question. So, we might as well just have it said. So, a backup offer from a market rate, a developer who would be, who would purchase it to, or to re, possibly to redevelop it for market-rate housing?
We don't know that, but that's the most likely scenario. We know it's not a affordable proposal, affordable housing proposal.
Right. Okay. And so, there, yeah, so we have to, we have to balance what we're doing here with the fact that some tenants may be at risk if the deal doesn't close.
That's right.
Perhaps some of the same rent tenants that we are seeking to protect from this, from this approach, maybe the same ones that are at risk when the property gets purchased by someone who's not interested in developing market, or affordable housing. Okay. I just, so you're nodding because that, that's, that's...
That's generally always what happens when these kind of apartments are purchased by market rate, so I would, I would, I can't guarantee they're not going to do it, but...
We're speculating. It's tempting to speculate that that's the likely outcome, or something like that would be. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will take a motion on the resolution, and then we can amend it.
I will make that motion, if I may. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 5861 as amended.
Sorry, Councilmember Tim Chisen, you just move the resolution first, and then you can do the amendment.
You want me to move the resolution?
Yeah, but just don't say "as amended."
I will move to pass, move to approve Resolution R. 5861.
Second?
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Chisen, second by Councilmember Black to move Resolution 5861. Would anyone like to make the amended? Councilmember Tim Chisen.
I will move to make the amendment that is contained on the slide above in the underlined language.
Second?
It has been moved by Councilmember Tim Chisen, second by Councilmember Black to move the Tim Chisen amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 6-0. Is now, we are now looking at Resolution 5861 as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And thank you for figuring this out tonight. Okay, we are done with our business agenda. Oh, Patrick's gone. All right. We are now moving on to council reports, and I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got two things to highlight. First, today, the Chamber Luncheon had a presentation by Puget Sound Energy on the future of energy, and they talked about their plans today to be based on the Clean Energy Transformation Act, to be coal-free by 2025, carbon-neutral by 2030, and 100% clean energy supply by 2045, and talked a lot about their new generation, including distributed generation where, with the use of batteries, our electric car batteries, things like that, to build a modern grid. It was a fascinating presentation and really appreciated the, the chance to hear that. Secondly, and I will note that Councilmember Black, Councilmember Sweet, the mayor, and Councilmember Pascal were at that, that meeting today. In addition, on a week ago Saturday, The Urbanists organized a walking tour of middle housing in the North Rose Hill neighborhood, led by Planning Director Adam Weinstein. Councilmember Falcone and I joined, in addition to Planning Commissioner Chair Rodney Rutherford, neighbors association leaders and others, and it was a great show of our success, both on, on middle housing, given what was done before 2020 and when we passed our middle housing code in 2020. But we also, during that walking tour, saw some examples of sidewalk gaps, which led to a great informal discussion among all the participants of the opportunities, areas where we could do better in, in challenges. So, that got me thinking about an LRM, and I'd like to move that the council approve a legislative request memo asking the city manager to explore options to accelerate the completion of sidewalk gaps. These options may include adding projects on key streets or arterials during our capital improvement program updates, exploring less expensive interim connections such as asphalt or gravel paths, considering policy and code changes that allow more flexibility and requirements for developer-required improvements, and exploring concepts such as latecomer fees where the city may implement the improvements but seek reimbursement when development occurs.
Second. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Councilmember Sweet, to do an LRM on addressing sidewalk gaps as described. Anything else you want to add?
Just that all of those ideas were part of the robust discussion, and so it was great to see, okay, are there things that we can do better? Today, we have a sidewalk opportunity fund where if there's development that's happening and we, we see an opportunity for the gap, the city's got a budget pool to go do that, but we also discussed other things that we could do better.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the LRM? I will just thank you for bringing this forward. You know, we talk about this frequently, like, is there a less expensive way to do this? Why don't we do gravel? And I, I like that you've codified it, and we can have that conversation. So, thank you. The question is on the motion of the Arnold LRM made by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Sweet. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of events over the last few weeks, and more upcoming here in the next few weeks, but a lot of, a number of luncheons, that, that Chamber Luncheon was, was great today, as well as the one a couple of weeks ago, talking about school lunch debt, and, and I know, I know some of us have some questions about that. We talked about that at the School District Coordinating Committee meeting last, last week, and asked the school district to provide more information on the extent of the debt. So, more information coming on that. And then, the other thing I'd mention is attending the, the KPD swearing-in and promotion ceremony. Councilmember Black was there with me. I think it was just us two, but another great, recognizing a lot of career milestones and a number of new officers and stuff, so it was great to be there. Always a good event. And then, the other event that was really special was the 132nd Avenue and Slater Avenue celebration of the, what am I calling it?
Groundbreaking.
Yeah, groundbreaking, groundbreaking event. I was thinking shoveling event, but that's not, that's not right. We had some nice gold shovels, but it was great to get that project off the ground, and I know there's, the community is long-awaited for a safer crossing there on the CKC connecting to the East Rail. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Sweet?
A question for that. Is that still a Hawk Crossing, or is it something more now?
It's a regular traffic signal, no.
Okay, that's what I thought. Good to hear. Actually, I don't really have much to report. You've been getting regular reports from Carley. We've had lots of meetings with regard to both water and solid waste, and continue to have more. I've got two more tomorrow, so looking forward to tomorrow and the, the ride on the, the new sound transit in Redmond. I think a number of us are going to be there. That's pretty exciting. I'm personally very excited that the session in the legislature is over. There are now two people living in my house instead of one, and it just makes life a whole lot easier because now I can get a ride to the station opening tomorrow, or at least to the bus to get to the ride. Anyway, so with that, I agree with the comment that Councilmember Pascal meant. There have been so many events and so much going on, it really is a little bit overwhelming for me, but this is an incredibly active council, and pass it off to Councilmember Black.
Councilmember Black.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add. Appreciate every, everybody's covered the things that were on my list. Only thing I wanted to add to Councilmember Sweet was just to mention that there is a public community celebration on Saturday for the Redmond stations that are opening as part of the extension of the 2-line. So, anyone listening or members of our audience who are interested in experiencing that, they should do that on Saturday. Does any of my colleagues know the time? 10:00 a.m.?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m., there you go.
First train leaves Redmond Station at noon.
There you go. All right. Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. I attended the groundbreaking ceremony with my son, and that was a fun ceremony. And I promised a member of the community I would plug her event, and on Friday at 5 o'clock at Merrill Gardens, there is the senior art show. So, wanted to remind everybody about that, and if you're watching, I plugged your event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet forgot that we built houses on Saturday.
Oh, good God. It's because I'm still sore.
So, the women council members got to join Habitat for Humanity for Women Build, and so we will, we climbed scaffolding, we wielded nail guns. It was really fun, and I was very sore after, but it was worthwhile. There was probably 80 women there that were building houses, so...
And we literally sided a quarter of a house.
Yeah. Yeah, we did real work, so it was great.
Awesome.
And then, we didn't have enough fun there, so we stopped at Junk in the Trunk at Houghton Park and Play, which everybody was thrilled to be there, the vendors, the audience, every, the buyers. It was really well done, and I, and I think there was a lot of requests to do it more than once a year, so it was very popular. I had the honor, a privilege, to participate in the selection committee for the PSRC Vision 2050 Awards. It's where cities submit awards for housing projects, open space, transportation investments, comp plans, economic development, climate action, and working together as cross-jurisdictional partnerships. There was probably over 30 submissions. It was really impressive to see what other cities are doing throughout the Ford County region. It was really clear that we could admire and learn from each other. There were some really terrific projects, so, and these projects will be announced at the PSRC General Assembly in a couple of weeks, so that was really fun to do. And this week is municipal, Professional Municipal Clerk Week. So, we really need to thank our dedicated city clerks who do so much behind the scenes to make sure things run smoothly. I could not do this without Emily, or who, or whoever else is in that chair. They are our documentarians, they manage our public records, they perform IT on the fly and help people with their presentation, and they support city elections. So, we are so grateful for your service to our city, all of you. So, I would like to give them a round of applause. Thank you. That is it. City manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things for announcement. I have the great privilege of being re-elected for the third time as the president of Racer, so my streak continues, but it is a great privilege. We will be having the Racer Principals Assembly, it's coming up in June, and I want to see if the council would be interested in us having a special presentation or study session from Racer to the city council rather than just the Principals Assembly, so, so I can bring that to a future council meeting in May or June.
Yes, 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 yes.
Since you're in charge.
Yeah, you can make that happen.
Thank you. Also, some of you noted this, the city of Kirkland sent out the concept of our Regional Affordability Utilities Affordability Summit, and a document sent out about doing it in the spring of 2026. You may have heard the King County Council unanimously appointed Executive Shannon Braddock to be the interim executive through the end of the year, which is great news. She announced a pretty cool and comprehensive 200-day plan, and one of those elements of the 200-day plan is a 2025 Regional Affordability Summit for utilities. So, we'll be trying to work with them to figure out what that might look like. It's probably going to start in the fall and straddle the years, would be my guess, but so happy to see that they're interested in having those conversations, so...
Councilmember Sweet has a question.
Yeah.
Well, no, go ahead and finish your report.
Well, I was, I'm almost done, yeah, so...
Just wanting some clarification, I noticed that we have new neighbors moving in, and I'm not sure how broadly that's been broadcast.
Yes, that was by other topic, thank you.
I'll listen to that.
Yes, I appreciate that, yeah. So, that was my final comment, was you'll notice Camp United We Stand is coming in for another 90-day rotation. We talked about that very briefly, but didn't give an official announcement. We talked about the RVs that were stationed there, so we had to move them, knowing that Camp United We Stand was coming. They'll be here for the next 90 days, and as always, it's been a positive experience working with them and the permitting, the planning department takes lead on that. Happy to answer any questions, but the church, they have us down to a pretty good routine.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I was going to go back a step, so I want, maybe you should ask everybody if they have any questions about...
Anybody have any questions?
Okay. I was going to go back a step, I didn't get a chance to. When we're talking about the convening, the, the great idea that, that we had for the utili-
I love that the county council, or, sorry, that the new executive has made this a priority. I also want to make sure our vision for it, which I feel pretty convinced is a vision of a real work, working convening, where real stuff gets done and real stuff gets decided, that I want that vision, I want us to, I guess I'm just asking city manager, let's do what we can to make sure that vision is, because I don't want to gather a bunch of cities together and have the county do a presentation to us. That's not what I, that's not what, I don't think that's any of our vision. Our vision is where we really get together and people roll up, city leaders and the county leaders get together and roll up our sleeves and actually figure this stuff out.
Yeah, well, I haven't talked to the executive directly. That would be my guess, right? I mean, when you, well, the only few people has the similar experience. When you know you have 200 days and you're not running for reelection is the time that you want to actually ask people to roll up their sleeves and make decisions that aren't based on reelection, right? So I'm going to assume that the reason that they did that is that's exactly what they want to do, is like really ask the hard questions about, do we need to look at things differently to create affordability in utilities? So, but I'll be reaching out to them in the next couple of days and see. In our document that they looked at, we did talk about this being based on the summits that were just exactly that. And so I was noting that the RIAA presentation was actually based on that same concept, as we brought up all the electives interim and we launched the watershed recovery plans and similar to that. There was the government summits that led to the merger of Metro and King County. So I think everybody gets that that's what we're talking about. And so I'm confident that's what they'll want to do.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to emphasize that.
No, I appreciate that. I think, anything else? Calendar update?
Oh, just, and then any other changes to the calendar from council?
Thank you, Mayor. We've talked previously about the King County Parks Levy in my previous reports. And I want to do, ask about the council directing staff to add a public hearing in consideration of Kirkland, supporting the Parks Levy to a future council agenda. There's some significant investments in Kirkland, and I think it's worth the opportunity to educate the public about them and consider a vote and support.
Anybody object? Okay, we've got head nods.
All right.
Go forth.
Put that on there. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, I look forward to seeing everybody on May 13th for the Community Appreciation Night. Singing and dancing will be had and a state of the city. We are adjourned.
Thank you.